In session for this regular meeting Tuesday, November first, two thousand and twenty-two. It's good to see you all here this morning. Let's begin with the prayer and the pledge. Father, we thank you today for this day that you've given each and every one of us. Father, we pray that you be with us in this day. We don't even know the things that are going to transpire in this day, but we look to you. We thank you for wisdom and understanding that you impart. We ask for those attributes to be given to us here this morning. God, help us to look and see not just today, but the future that's coming for each and every one of us and plan accordingly. Father, we thank you for discretion and understanding today for each and every commissioner. Father, we thank you for this time together in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. First thing on the agenda is payment of the county bills.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous vote for him. All right. Up next is public comments. Let me, I'm gonna pull them just in the order they're laying here. Ms. Donna Butterfield.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Donna Butterfield. I attended the Weems Board of Governors meeting held last Thursday. Alliant reported Weems lost one point two million dollars in the last reporting period, and that Weems only has forty-two days cash on hand to pay bills and meet salary. The salary costs have increased a hundred and ten thousand dollars because of Weems' salary parity plan. During that meeting, David Walker, Weems CEO, told the board that he is working on plans to renovate the hospital rooms. If they can't be renovated, he wants to build a new wing. The basic problem with this plan is that Weems doesn't have near the number of patients in the hospital to justify spending millions of taxpayer dollars. The average daily census is only point five eight, less than one patient in the hospital a day, which means there are some days with no patients at all. The Board of County Commissioners requires all county department heads to regularly report on their work, from parks and rec, emergency management, to the library. Instead of learning about Weems' activities from a concerned citizen like me, I suggest you require Weems CEO David Walker to regularly appear before this commission to report on the hospital status, just like you do with other department heads. A lot is going on at Weems. It's your hospital. You need to be kept informed. I was told at the hospital meeting that I wasn't allowed to ask questions, but you can and you should. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donna. Mr. Marone, I think these other two might be online. Ms. Debbie Jordan?
Correct, Ms. Jordan. If I'm on line, would you raise your hand, please? Okay, there she is. One second, Commissioner. All right, she's on mute. You can address her now, Commissioner. I mean, she's, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Jordan.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm gonna be brief for the interest of time. I wanna speak first about the TDC Review Committee meeting, which I was watching, and I would like to know if you all have watched it, because I saw some particularly interesting things at seventeen minutes and forty-nine seconds into the review committee Zoom video. Walter asked if there's a local firm that's placing a bid, do they get a higher priority than an outsider? Because I know that the county had talked about that. Michael Marone said the state doesn't allow, so the county follows the local, follows that. The local preference is not allowed. It can't be considered as part of the scoring process. Tony Milander, in return, said, I understand what you're saying, no favoritism, okay? However, sometimes we have history with vendors. They've been our vendors, our business contractor for years, and the plant performed very well. How does he, how does he measure that? How's that measured? Some of these that we're looking at, never done business here with you, so you don't know any of their history, and what kind of work they produced, other than what we have in writing here. The question is leading into part of what Walter says. If you have history with a vendor, good or bad, you take that into consideration. Marone says, I ask that you don't. And, hold on just a minute. John Solomon, I believe it was, said, I ask any members, take an objective look at things and score according to yourself, based, and Michael Marone, based on what's in front of you at this time. John Solomon, your opinions, and that's what we wanted you here for, is your opinions, whatever that may be. My question to you, Commissioners, is have any of you seen these score sheets? Have any of you seen the presentations, some of which are riveting? Have you seen the striking visual presentations that touch the very essence, the spirit of community that has touched hearts around the world? Images of little Izzy, the young girl who was here for Make-A-Wish Foundation. Her wish was to come to Saint George Island. Did you see the images of llamas while on the beach with flowers in their hair? With the rock by the sea with Pinkout, who raised enough, over a hundred thousand dollars to, to help toward a mammography machine? Have you seen the qualifications of these people, a Google partner? One of these, one of these people that Google partner, which is one of three persons that achieved premier status and has two of those members on their team. I think that's really important to consider. And in closing, I want to touch on one other subject. I want to know if there are any motions made specifically regarding Landmark Village today. I want to know if there's gonna be an opportunity for public comment on that as well, because I see nothing listed in the agenda, so I have no idea what's gonna be talked about there. That is all I have. I thank you very much for your time. I ask you to really ask to get a better look at these presentations, as they stand. They're just, I see a lot of holes in there, and I, I think you guys, you Commissioners, deserve to be more informed than I think this is at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Marone, there's nothing coming up today about Landmark Fire Department.
I have an information item that tells you, that tells you when the next, the training meeting is set up. That, that's it.
Just information. It's not board action. And it's...
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And not trying to take up anybody's public comment times, but I assure you, any scoring that was done is in a sealed envelope, and nobody has seen those score sheets. All right. Next is Ms. Victoria Hart.
I don't see Ms. Hart here, or I don't see her online. And so she did highlight, I thought I highlighted she, she did say on her public comments, correct?
She did, yes. But nothing, no response.
No response, nobody raising their hand online, or I don't see her here in the meeting room.
So we'll proceed to the next phase of meeting.
Well, if you would, that, since, I was trying to do this anyway, kind of a good segue. So, in my hand, sealed envelopes from that, that review committee meeting, that was just discussed. I'm going to hand the envelope to Erin. She's going to pull the score sheets out, score sheets out, do a total tally sheet. We make copies. I'm gonna give them to you, so by the time Mr. Solomon approaches, he does his report, we then will address the vendor contracts at that time. Okay? And I assure you, the board did a very good job. That review committee did.
So up next, Superintendent Roads and Bridges, Mr. Howard Neighbors.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner. I ain't got no action items. I do, we still cutting grass and cleaning sidewalks and putting pipes and stuff in, so been very, very dry, so maybe we'll get a little bit of rain here shortly, where we can try to grade some roads and stuff. It's just too dry. There is a few old roads. We got a few calls, but it's so dry, if you try to grade them roads right now, you just, just turn to powder and dust. So, and I also want to thank the board for approving the new max, lease max that we got. We picked them up yesterday. And also thank the board for the three employees that we moved around.
Everything working pretty good so far, other than lack of inmates?
Yes, sir. We average it out six or seven a day still, but I guess better than none.
So, Mr. Howard, we can talk about it later, but I did want to at least mention to you here this morning. I had somebody reach out to me at the end of last week from the Corps of Engineers about another project they have done in our vicinity. It's up in the north part of the county with some of the river sloughs, and they have an abundance of, to put it the best way I know how, material, they think that might be usable for road stuff. I can give the information, so you can talk to them and see. They're, they're trying to get somebody to take it, is what they're trying to do. But I can talk to you about it later. I just wanted to mention it here this morning.
Okay. And we can't use it for, you know, road base. We can't use it with shoulders and different stuff, you know? So some of that stuff, you don't want to put nothing on a road that gets real, real hard and cracks, because then you can't grade it or drag it or nothing, so you wind up having to dig it up.
Well, they said they had the, whatever the surveys is to show what kind of sand it is, and all this other stuff that they have to do anyways. So maybe from that, we can know if it's usable, but it's something I'll call you about later today or tomorrow.
We definitely use that sand, you know, more like sand and stuff.
Anyone else have anything for Mr. Neighbors this morning?
Mr. Chairman, I've got something. It's not necessarily for you, Mr. Neighbors. It's kind of for all of our, excuse me, county staff. I see that you had zero inmates on Monday, and it's hit or miss. You can never guarantee when you're getting inmates and how many. Next year for budget, we need to figure out a different plan. I don't want to disservice our community and our citizens. This is nothing against you, Mr. Howard. I know you do a fantastic job, but we need to make sure that we have this adequate staff for Parks and Rec, in addition to the Parks and, or Parks and Rec in your department, because we don't need to disservice our citizens by not digging ditches or mowing the grass because we don't have the inmates. I'm sorry. I just don't think that's a good enough reason. So we need to do what we need to do to prepare now. If we do need to hire additional, even if it's part-time staff, especially during the summer, to mow the, mow the grass, we need to really look into that, take that into consideration.
If we could find anybody to work, that's another.
Yeah, that's an issue, too.
Maybe if it's part-time, maybe basically on, you know, like the road department or Parks and Rec landfill, when you hire somebody, maybe part-time will be good, but full-time, you know, they gotta be, basically with license, they got to be the prison, they got to approve them, and different stuff like that. So, but I guess part-time would be different.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to, yeah.
Yeah, they wouldn't have to have all that.
You know, like I said, your busiest time is during the summer, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So we wouldn't really need them year-round, correct?
Right. From about the end of April to the end of November. It's very busy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I do agree with what Mr. Ward's saying. If nothing else, we need to at least start the discussion, so we know what we're ready to do, need to do, prepared to do, all those things. I mean, it has to kind of start. I'd agree with that.
Sounds good to me.
Thank y'all, Mr. Howard, for everything you do and everything y'all do for us.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, if you would like, I think Ms. Victoria Hart arrived, even though we're past public comments, we could, just a few minutes passed, if she doesn't...
Yep. Ms. Victoria, go ahead and come forward. We were looking for you online, but it's okay. You're live here in person. Come on forward. State your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hang on a second. Let me get organized before you start that timer.
We're not that rough on the timer, Ms. Victoria.
I'm not that quick of a trigger, Ms. Victoria.
Victoria Hart, Landmark Village. I'm here today to talk about the process that was used to create the RFQs for the TDC, the county used to, to create the RFQs. I want to talk about the process specifically. The RFQs were written requiring that the various vendors have a minimum of five years' experience. Experience does not necessarily equate to quality. What, what occurred in the presentations were that there were vendors who had less than five years' experience that were still allowed to present. Had I known this, I would have applied, and would have encouraged other people to apply also. The present vendors, I want to say one thing, creativity and new ideas come from new vendors. The present vendors would have already tried out their new ideas on the contracts that they have now. I want to go back to the process and talk about evaluation. This should have been the very first step that was taken in this process. Presently under contract, the vendors that are, how do you know that the vendors presently under contract are doing a good job? We have, we are living in a data-driven society, and the numbers are important, especially when you're looking at tax dollars tied to those numbers. How many print sources have they used and with what results? What TV ads did they create, and in which markets? What was the viewership? How many hits on the website pages have been recorded over the past year? What surveys have been done with the people who are vacationing here? How and why do they choose Franklin County? What radio stations ran ads? What time of day? How many listeners? What kind of feedback was recorded on the webpages through public comments? What worked and what didn't work? Did the tourists attend any special events, such as holiday in the harbor? Which target demographics are you trying to attract? You need this information prior to hiring any vendors. You need this information prior to hiring any vendors. But there's more. Before you have, before you hire vendors for this highly important job of representing Franklin County in the outside world, shouldn't you have established criteria as to how they would be evaluated? I realize you use short score sheets, but the vendors and the team of scores should be, should have received in-depth, in-length descriptions of what criteria was going to be used to judge them ahead of time. And you can't change horses in the middle of the stream. In other words, there should never have been a discussion about whether the present vendor should get more points. No, you can't do that. Under the RFQs for radio, there was absolutely no description. Absolutely none. So you're, and radio is a very important way of attracting tourists. Finally, you are preparing to issue the vendors a five-year contract without really knowing what techniques, what technologies might be the most successful in the future. Do you have any idea as to the economic impact of the, of the proposed ads because, I'm sorry, I can't read my writing, because no demographic groups were sampled? In other words, did we do any samples of different demographic groups to see what's going on? And then finally, I suggest that you start over, or in lieu of starting over, offer a one-year contract with the vendors, reporting to TDC every three months or more frequently than that. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Mr. Chairman, I know you serve as a TDC chairman, and I know John, the administrator, is out there. Do you want to address this now or we can wait till John's, John's report to address it?
We can talk about it later when Mr. Solomon's up. I mean, you know what I mean, there's other stuff at hand. So, next will be Mr. Fonda Davis, Solomon Way's Director, Animal Control and Parks and Recreation.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I have no action item this morning. What I would like to bring up, I was just listening to Mr. Neighbors about the help. What we are getting is some applications with people with prior felons. Felons have been over the year, but when we leave it at the DOC for certification, then they deny because of felon. But I would like for the board that sometime, Mr. Shulow could revise the, the policy about hiring felons. We looked at it, we discussed it one time, and it don't say that you can't hire a felon, but it says you cannot obtain a felon that while you are employed. But some kind of way, again, like I say, is that, you know, over the years, people have made a mistake during their lifetime, during their life, or that won't follow. They, they are some good people these days.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, the uh, something maybe we can look into, don't know all the ins and outs of what might be triggering it being a problem. But I know like specifically for Parks and Recreation Department, if you're not using inmate labor, I don't think it would be a problem, but I don't want to speak out of turn, you know what I mean? So, I do think it needs to be evaluated.
I'll save this question for now.
That's all good. But I do think it, you know, if we can evaluate it and see if there's something we can do. Even people that messed up still need a job.
Right, right. And again, like I say, you have applications, as soon as they hear about opening a job, they, they file, fill in the application, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Counselor?
Yes, sir.
I think if they're in the time, they should be able to work. They can't, what, what they want them to do, get up there and don't find a job and get back in trouble? That's not right. I mean, they, they done, they made a mistake. Or if they done any intention, they done any intention, they paid for it, it's over. They should be able to start over.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I agree exactly with what you've said, Commissioner Lockley. You know, some people hit their bottom, and there's, there's reform right there. And I think that they ought to be given a good, solid, fair chance. And also, in our local jail system, there is a fresh start program. And many of the candidates that are in that program have that attitude of fresh start. I'm going to do it over again. I'm going to reset the button. And they may be potentially good candidates coming out of there as well. So I think we've got some good opportunity.
Is there, Michael, is there anything on your report that we need to handle when Mr. Davis is here?
Apologize, but I really don't know, to be honest.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Not like I didn't write my own report, but to bring that into question, huh? But I don't think so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or concerns for Director Davis? Sir, thank you for your time. Thank you for all y'all do for us.
Thank you all.
Ms. Pam Bernal, Emergency Management Director?
Morning, Commissioner. Um, I do not have any action items at this time.
Anyone have any questions or concerns for Ms. Pam? Ms. Pam, it looks like we actually made it through hurricane season with no major storm.
Don't.
Nah, we're doing good.
You can jinx us.
We need a regular year. We haven't had a regular year in quite some time. From the fires that destroyed thirty homes in East Point to Hurricane Michael, which was a Cat Five, to worldwide pandemic, we need a regular year. We need just a regular year.
Say that one to the neck, man.
There you go.
And they owe it to the end of them, man.
There you go, that's why I went.
Anyone have anything for Ms. Bernal while she's here?
I just have noticed lately that you're putting in a lot of these tasks that you have done throughout the month, and I really like those summary sentences. It just gives us a good feel for what's happening over there. And you know, I just, again, I'm, I've been enamored with the Island View Park and what's been going on there. And had it not been for your staff teaching me a few months ago how you took the inventory of all those individual pieces and parts and made a presentation to FEMA that rescinded four hundred and eighty thousand, and you got one point eight million for that. Not only is that park beginning to look even better and better, but you have the library of inventory sitting there in case it gets damaged again. I just think that is remarkable for our county and our budget. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pam. Thank you for everything y'all do. Alright, Mr. Eric Lovestrand, Extension Office Director?
Mr. Lovestrand is setting up exhibits as we speak for the North, for the North Florida Fair in Tallahassee.
Okay. Alright, so we'll move on to the Library Director, Ms. Whitney Roundtree.
And she, there's, there she is, yep.
Hey, Whitney. Morning.
No items for you today. We had a great month. We got to participate in a lot of community events. We ran the homecoming parade. We handed out candy at the spectacular trick-or-treat. We had some volunteers set up last night at the Carabelle Branch handing out candy. We'll be closed for a couple of the upcoming holidays, including Veterans Day and Thanksgiving. The parking lot in Carabelle is all finished. It looks great. Thank you for that. And other than that, I've been working on annual stats, so I'll be able to present those to you next month, and we're finishing up our state aid applications.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or concerns for Ms. Whitney? Ms. Whitney, thank you for everything y'all do.
You bet.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. John Solomon, TDC Administrator?
Good morning, Commissioners. John Solomon, TDC Director. Have, um, one information item, one action item. The information item is the TDC Board did approve the request from the county for the money for the St. Gradalen Playground Project. So that has been approved by the county commission's request. The second action item is we have two TDC Board members up for renewal. They both expressed interest in staying on the board. That was Kathy Robinson and Buck Bolden, ones from St. Gradalen, ones from Applejack Call. The TDC Board voted to recommend reinstating them for a next term. This is their first current term.
Okay. And both of them, it was their first term. They haven't served more than
Kathy has served before, but this is her first time. Yeah, this was years ago, yes.
Okay. And is that anything you need?
That's an action item I need from the Board, yes.
Alright, pleasure to the Board.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bolden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish, so we're retaining Ms. Robinson and Mr. Bolden as TDC Board members.
As TDC volunteers, yes.
And they're both providers, correct?
Both of them are providers, yes, sir.
And there's also the observation that there, it's consistency and continuity, and I like that as well.
Yeah, and also their, their term has been through COVID and everything else too, so.
Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a five-o vote. Alright, anything else, sir? Ms. Griffith, you about to do your stuff with your vendors?
I was, actually. Well, let's see, Michael is making copies for you all right now. However, on my report, I do have two items that are actually TDC-related. I would like to go ahead and proceed with those two items if possible. Okay. Item number four on my report. Last year, the Franklin County Tourist Development Council prepared a grant application for one hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to develop the exhibits for the Franklin County Maritime Heritage Museum at Buddy Ward Park. This summer, the Division of Historic Resources notified Franklin County that the project was going to be funded, and the grant agreement was just received this past week. These exhibits will showcase the county's maritime history and vibrant commercial seafood industry. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached grant agreement with the Florida Division of Historic Resources for the Maritime Heritage Museum exhibits.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion, Commissioners?
What they have up there?
Nothing currently. We're waiting on the grant, Mr. Noah.
I'm talking about what on the paper?
The papers, what the grant's going to consist of, it's the exhibits on different maritime heritage from cotton to lumber to seafood to everything that's made Franklin County what it is in the maritime industry. It's going to be a full maritime heritage exhibit. So it'll cover all different types of genres and, and points in time that Franklin County had from the beginning to now, with availability to expand later on, of a storyboard of how it developed over the years.
Very good.
Alright, so we did have a motion second. We just need to vote, correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. It's amazing. We'll take the state's rent money.
Yep.
Yes, every time.
Yeah, Commissioners, and the second item that's TDC-related on my report is going to be item number five. And it's actually one of the requests to advertise for construction bids, and it's for the Third Street West Dune Walkover. It was construction of a dune walkover within the Commercial District of St. George Island for erosion control. And that is actually one of the authorized uses of sales tax proceeds for TDC.
And Commissioners, with this was actually approved at a previous time, but we had to wait for turtle season to be over.
That's right.
Yep.
Trying to make sure we do it at the right time.
Yes, sir.
Pleasure to the Board?
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bolden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion?
Just a comment. You know, folks wonder, where does the tourist tax money go? I'm big on signage, and boy, this would be a great opportunity to just say, this board walk was sponsored by the TDC.
Yes, sir. That's another plan that we have with the new grant program and this as well, that there'll be signs on anything that the TDC does partially or completely fund.
Any more discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Five-o. Anything else, Ms. Griffith?
That's it.
Okay. Alright, so I guess we'll go on to this TDC vendor.
Actually, yeah, my report, page sixteen, item one, is a vendor selection, but I was out the room making copies. Before I get to that, I'd like John, if he could, to kind of respond to some of what was said during public comments this morning.
Sir, before we do that, can we please score these first? I just don't want, we're going to vote on these.
Your, your choice. Let me bring up item one.
I would rather us vote on what's in front of us and discuss it, then we can have some discussion about, yes. Please.
Commissioners, if you're looking at page sixteen, item one, at your last meeting, RFQ packets for TDC vendor contracts were open, were allowed. The review committee met here in your meeting room in a public setting. That was on Thursday at ten o'clock, last Thursday at ten o'clock, I believe, to review the packets and hear a short presentation with question and answers from some of the representatives that attended the meeting. The committee completed the score sheets, which were then placed in a sealed envelope and given to the clerk's office. That envelope was opened earlier this morning, given to Mrs. Griffith, so the scores could be tallied. You should have a copy of the final tally sheet with the ranking of each firm individual. With that information, the Board could now proceed with selecting a candidate to award a contract for the TDC vendor services. You actually have, you have two scoring sheets, but they're four contracts. There was only one submittal for TV and one submittal for radio. And so I, I went, at the appropriate time you ask, I will tell you those, so you can confirm those. Or you just want to go ahead and default and say we're going to go with, with the, with the radio now, which was, it's Oyster Radio, but that's not
East Bay.
I've got to Internet marketing. I need one print. Somebody
Are we looking at four separate motions or one motion to accept all?
What would be easier? It's, it's four contracts, all for TDC services, four separate motions?
Four separate, because you're going to consider them individually.
Okay, so if we'd like to, I could, it was Oyster Radio, I think they have another corporation name, for the radio services. That's the only one submitted a package, so if
Pleasure to the Board to approve Oyster Radio for radio.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish. Second by Commissioner Lockley. Assuming they were the only one that put in the RFQ. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's unanimous.
And for television, television services and that video production, it was Forgotten Coast Television. I'm sorry, drawing a blank here. I've got so much going on. Yes, they're the only ones that submitted a package for that service.
Okay.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion before we vote? On awarding television contract to Forgotten Coast TV? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
For Internet marketing, you have that score sheet in front of you. There were four companies. Buck, Patty Ford, Mr. Michael Yelvington, and 2K Web Group. Erin has done the scoring, and number one rank is 2K Web Group.
Discussion or pleasure to the Board?
So move.
Motion to approve the
Number one ranked?
Number one ranked firm from the Internet marketing category. Our Commissioner Parrish. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
For the final one, Prayna General Marketing, number one rank, was Bay Media.
Discussion, pleasure to the Board?
So move.
And we have a motion to approve, that's to approve the number one ranked firm.
For Bay Media Services, yes.
Second.
From that motion by Commissioner Bolden, we have a second by Commissioner Parrish. Any discussion, Commissioner? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Alright, Commissioners. Before we move on, the second item also deals with the TDC vendor contracts. But I really want to thank the review committee. They did a wonderful job. They asked, they asked a lot of questions, which was a good thing, to ask questions of myself, of Mr. Solomon, and of the presenters, you know? So they did a really good job. Now, I've heard some statements about the questions they asked, but those are questions that they should have asked.
Yes.
I would rather they asked those questions and assumed something, which is a problem, which would have been the problem. So they got a clarification of how they should apply a scoring sheet. And we, I just went over there So they got a clarification of how they should apply your scoring sheet, and we, I went over there, I, I think in fair detail. So I wanna thank those members that served, because if they didn't, then we would be still dealing with this situation. If no one else, I'm really glad that that situation is over, so we are where we are, okay. I'm gonna, don't move yet, Mrs. Solomon, because we still have to address some of the other concerns about data, and we'll get to that. So, item two, since the county has completed the TDC vendor advertising and selection process, there are some procedures that would make this process more efficient in the future. As the board has discussed in the past, vendor contracts and the administrative contract should expire in alternate years. This, the board, well, not particularly all these members, but the board had this discussion years ago about doing this. That would eliminate any chances of having a new administrator and, and new vendors in the same year. When the vendor contracts are within a six-month expiration window, and this is a recommendation that I'm giving you guys how we should move forward, the TDC administrator will inform the board of the upcoming expiration date on the contracts. This board would have the option of seeking a recommendation from the TDC board, or automatically renewing the contracts for two years, or advertising for requests for qualifications, qualifications similar to what was done this year. The same procedure would be used for the TDC administrator's contract, except the county coordinator would bring that contract before the board to consider the same options. Since the TDC administrator's contract expires at the end of this calendar year, I think, close enough, and, and to get both sets of contracts on alternate years, the board may consider an initial three-year contract, then after that, two-year contracts for your vendor, for your vendors, and a two-year contract for your current administrator. That then would put them on alternate years going forward. And that would make the procedure a lot smoother, commissioners, in the future, as you guys are gonna deal with it. So, basically, asking the board to authorize a three-year contract for each vendor, and then we will, it will be followed up by a two-year contract, and, and then a, for your vendors, and a two-year contract for the TDC administrator. That's my recommendation, a motion in front of you.
And in the same thing, we would be, depending on what the board motions and votes for, we would be renewing the TDC administrative contract at the same time.
Yes, if that's your desire today, yes, you can make that spark, yes.
I just make sure I understood what you're saying, sir. Pleasure to the board?
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish, any discussion?
With comment?
Yes.
At the risk of just avoiding any conflict of interest, John, can you comment on our thoughts here this morning? How does that function?
We've already made a motion and seconded, that's, no.
All right.
This is commissioners, discussing. All right, Commissioner Lockley?
So now they'll be stagnant?
Yes, sir. They'll be altered, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, we've talked about it before, we've never done it.
Okay, now, in the stagnation, what'll be the time limit? For?
So it'll be every two years, so the vendors will serve two years, and then at a month, a year and a half in, Mr. Solomon, your TDC administrator will bring to you and say, commissioners, these contracts will be up in six months. What do you wanna do? Do you wanna automatically renew? Do you wanna go off RFQs? Do you want the TDC board to send a recommendation to this board as to how to move forward? And then, commissioners, in the same way with the administrator's contract, a year after a year and a half, I will come to this board and say, commissioners, your administrator's contract is up, same choices. Do you want to automatically renew, go off RFQs, or just get a recommendation from your TDC board? I think that would make the process cleaner, and there'll be no misunderstandings as to how to move forward, et cetera, et cetera. The process is now in the minutes.
That's all I wanted.
I know, I, I noticed what you do after all along, commissioner, I realize. Sorry it took so long to get here, and some gray hair, but we're here.
Anything else, commissioners? Will we vote? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, so now can I ask Mr. Solomon to clear up some of the, the?
First, let me clarify, Commissioner Bolton, I do apologize if I was trying to come across wrongly. I just think that once we've made a motion and seconded, that kinda took anybody else out of discussion other than us. It had been before we made the motion, it had been, anyway, so just to clarify.
Okay, thank you.
So, John, before you start, I wanna clarify a couple, one or two points, and then you take over. So, the RFQ included, if I'm mistaken, tell me wrong, included how they were gonna be scored. There was an evaluation within a section, I think it was section three, four, four or five, within each RFQ. So all the vendors, anybody wanted to submit one, they knew how they were going to be scored. I mean, they knew based on what they were gonna be scored. And so there was no question there as to how that was happening, so I wanna make sure that's, that's, that was clear. Also, the point of having a public review committee is for your review committee to ask questions. How can, you know, do we have this option? How should we look at it? Because I, I, I made sure I explained to the committee that even though you had some of the representatives here making presentations, they had opportunity to ask them question and answers, they had to score based on the RFQ that was in front of them. So if a, if a person made a presentation, and it was, they brought up something new, that, no, you could not count that. You had to score the RFQ, that's what the criteria was based on. And, and yet, some people had a bunch of different things, I would say, and brought up other ideas and other things they've done. But keep in mind, there was RFQ, the RFQ was very specific about the type of services that the TDC was looking for. You know, so I, I, I don't wanna use the word fluff, that's a terrible word when somebody's making a presentation. You know, they think it's an integral part and it's important. But the, the review committee, the review committee's job was to make sure what they were scoring based on what was in front of them. And I wanna make that clear for the commissioners and for the public. Now, as it comes to the data and statistics, I, I know, I'm sure John is gonna tell you, well, if you come to every TDC meeting that we have, and I'll let him take it from there.
All right, well, you not only have to come to every TDC meeting we have, because everything that's at the meeting is on the website. So all our web reports, our print reports, television reports when we do TV, we do a lot of streaming shows, commercials now, not television. We are, we do have results on those, we've started those recently, so they're coming in now. As far as data and statistics, that's what we live on at the TDC, it's constant. Everything we, we gauge, how many people visit the website, how many people actually come to Franklin County and book rooms, we have programs that tell us how many came from a certain area, how many come from this area, and how many have, less have come from this area. It also scores the zip codes of how many people are booking here. So it's not only just what we see on the website, but also what we see coming in. We use that data when we do put ads out for print or television or internet to gauge, okay, if we had, if we advertise in North Carolina, three months later, is anybody booking from North Carolina? Is anybody visiting the website from North Carolina? Maybe this ad didn't work, maybe it did work, and we see the results from it, because that's the only thing we did in that area. So the data points we have are there. As far as new ideas, we meet three times a month and try to come up with new ideas, because this is tourism, and it changes with the wind. Whether it's a hurricane, whether it's a pandemic, whether it's the end of the pandemic, and everybody decides to travel on one weekend. We have to know and be able to adjust of what ages of the travelers are, what demographic they come from. Two years ago, the baby boomers were the top of the charts at almost forty million people traveling to the state of Florida. This year, it's the millennials and Gen Z. Forty-five point five million travelers to the state of Florida were Gen Z and millennial. Unfortunately, Gen X, we still down there toward the bottom. We're down there with the silver screen. We don't travel yet, so, but boomers have dropped into second place with thirty point five million. So there, we, you have to adjust your advertising and how you do it, the sound of it, the thought of it, the image of it. The people you use in the imagery or using the ads changes as you do ads. So throughout the year, you know, and, you know, we have, you know, a great team, you know, it's already been voted on, so I can say that we do have a great team that prides herself in, we want to do things different. We have done quite a couple of things different that even the state of Florida has decided they would use, because they thought it was a good idea. So we do adjust on the fly, and in all honesty, the tax collection reflects the results. I mean, if it was just still pennies, we've still doubled the amount of collections that it was four years ago.
So I, I will say this, it has been my distinct privilege to serve as the chairman of the TDC. I took over the torch from soon-to-be, again, Commissioner Sanders. It was kinda different, because when John and I come on together at the same time, it was right after Hurricane Michael, and we didn't know if there was gonna be enough money to even do any advertising. We actually got a grant from Visit Florida to help kinda prop us up that year and give us a little bit of cushion going forward, trying to figure things out. You fast forward four years later, and we've now got a, with all the vendors we have, we now have a six-time award-winning TDC that even during the shutdowns of the, of the COVID virus, the two-month shutdown, we were the only TDC in the state to increase our revenue from the year before. It was only three or four percent, but again, we were closed for two months. Some people don't want as much tourism as we have, but until we diversify our economy in another way, we've gotta run with the horse we got, and I think so far, we're doing a pretty good job. Now, some of the information that different people have asked me about, as far as where we're advertising, you can see the reports of where we've advertised and results, we get those from some of our vendors. How some, even like Nashville and Tampa, we moved them up the list last year 'cause of stuff we did, we targeted them. You won't get that information on the front side, though, 'cause it's proprietary until we see the outcome, 'cause we don't know how much we're gonna continue to advertise there. I think one of the bigger things that I just wanted to make sure and mention here this morning is particularly with the Tourist Development Council, a lot of our residents don't see what's going on with it, because the whole idea behind it is the advertising's not done here. It's done in other places to get people here. So you're not necessarily seeing all the commercials or all the things that's done on Amazon TV or YouTube TV. You're not seeing all those, 'cause you don't live in Nashville. You don't live in Atlanta, you don't live in some of the other places. That's just a nature of advertising. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that there this morning. I think so far, we've done a good job. How long will it last? Who knows? But I think we've done a decent job. We, we've taken the torch that was handed to us and run with it, let me put it that way. Yes, sir.
Oh. What, on the TDC, they got a percentage for admin, right?
We're actually paid by contract, but yeah, I mean, there is, it is percentage in there, so.
Don't y'all probably get fourteen percent?
Oh, no, sir, no, sir, I think allowable is close to eight or nine, but.
Did y'all get to eight or nine?
No, sir, we're more like two point eight.
Y'all getting to eight or nine?
No, sir.
What?
We're in a contract, you know, we have a contract with the county as the administration. It's a set amount.
The, the figures went down too, because the collections went up too.
Collections went up.
But that's what I'm talking about, before, where Kurt had it. They were, why y'all getting lower money, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, the current contract is set on a set amount of dollar, a dollar figure. And as the collections went at that amount, that percentage is smaller. I'm just trying to answer your question, commissioner. The current contract is set on a dollar figure, not on percentage.
I don't think people getting paid, you, you gotta pay people right. I, I believe in paying people right when they doing their job. That's what, and these people not getting paid right.
Well, that's, if we wanna amend the contract, there's definitely something we can do, we have to.
I make a motion, we amend the contract and pay the people right.
We just approve a new contract, so we have, we can negotiate that with a new contract, correct?
Yes.
Attorney, yeah, that's, that could.
Now, I can see it in the beginning, 'cause they, they were just starting out. But they got their spirit, they need to be paid right.
So we need to negotiate.
And you also have a budgeted value for administration, just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's another thing you're restricted by, so you, you've kind of created a, approved a budget already with that dollar amount, so.
Which is greater than it was before, 'cause the TDC board requested it to be greater, so.
So what we could do is get as close to that dollar amount as possible as we negotiate. But Commissioner Lockley, I hear what you're saying, you want us to negotiate for as, as much as possible that the budget allows for. I, I think that's the message you're giving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pay the people, they doing the work, you pay people.
Yeah.
Is it okay for us to do that by motion, attorney general, or what do we need to do?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't follow what the motion was.
I, I thought it was board direction that Commissioner.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I know, that's, the chairman wants to clarify that Commissioner Lockley was, wanted to make sure in negotiations, we give them as close to, as, we give admin as much as possible that the budget allows, the approved budget allows, no matter what the percentage is.
That's the board decision.
Right, so.
Yeah.
So the chairman has. I need a motion to finish that.
Do you want a motion forward to do that?
I make a motion to do it.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Lockley.
I, I got a question here in the middle of a motion, but are, are we talking about going to a percentage base? Are we talking about the TDC director saying, you know, this person, I need to pay this person a little more and that person a little more to bring them up standard? Because, you know, as, as we pass the, the new tax that we just passed recently, you know, I mean, if you go by percentage, you're talking about two or three, four hundred thousand dollars a year, which is not giving people more money for the work they're doing, that's, you know, and that, if you, if you do that, you're taking away money from advertising, you're taking money away from the core services that the TDC is delivering. So what are, what are we trying to accomplish here?
How I'm taking what Commissioner Lockley wants is, since we already have an approved budget, that admin amount is in the line, lineup, and it's capped.
Right.
What Commissioner Lockley wants is, no matter what the percentage is, as long as we don't go over that cap that's allowed, we get as close to that amount that's in the line item approved for admin. He doesn't want it below it, he wants it at that number. And if I'm wrong, Commissioner.
Okay, so we're not talking about going back to ten percent of the total TDC budget for administration? I mean, I'm just trying to clarify my mind exactly where we're going.
I'm glad you asked that question, sir.
I'm not talking about over two or three hundred thousand, but I'm talking about a fair price.
Second.
Yes, so which is, the, the cap will be what is in the approved budget, right now?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Since this was not on our agenda, does anyone here publicly wanna comment on this before we take action, potentially? Again, since this was not on our agenda, that's why I'm calling for public comment.
I would not have said anything, but y'all are taking this out of contact on the, on the TDC board. I would be very careful messing with dollars that's already been set for this year's budget.
Right.
And I would be careful to not vote on it or to make a definite decision until you do take it back to the TDC board.
Right.
And let them look at it. The one thing that you have to look at is when you get a contract for a vendor or, and, and the admin contract is a vendor, you gotta do a certain amount of vetting, you gotta do a certain amount of, you just went through with it, with the vendors. And for, for you all to look at the possibility of raising the funds that's gonna be paid to the administration vendor without, I'm trying to be nice about this, and, and everything, without it being put out for request for qualifications, that's not right. That's not right. They need to go through everything that any of the other vendors had to go through in order to get their money and get chosen or whatever. That's the same thing with the admin contract. And that's just, that's just the way I see it, and as you, you did say that you took my place on TDC. So I'm very well versed, but anything that you all do concerning TDC, you, this board is the ultimate bottom-line answer on the TDC staff. But give the chance to the TDC board to look at it and discuss it, and then put their recommendations, put their comments, because, you know, we asked for. put their comments, because, you know, we ask for these boards to come forward and represent us on these different items that the board has to have to bring back information. And if you don't ask them for their opinion, sooner or later, they're going to say, why am I sitting up here?
Right.
You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
So we need to be, you know, John Solomon's real good about talking about volunteers. That board that you just put, that Michael just put together to look at these contracts, that's a volunteer. These TDC people are volunteers. We need to let them know that they are appreciated, and by letting them know and letting them review, you are letting them know that they are appreciated. But that's just my comment.
Thank you.
Good.
Anyone else want to public a comment?
Hi, my name's Joel. I'm chairman. I live on the island. In all fairness, the TDC has done their job. They've brought more people in here than we had any clue that there would be 40 years The, I, I don't know how it can be done, but I, I believe now it's, nothing with the TDC really is going to change. The people are going to be the same. People that were there before are going to be there again. I don't see the TDC getting involved with the community like they should be. They're, they're not involving the community. They cancel, they've canceled more meetings than they've had. They say, you know, with all this coming up and the bids coming up, they had canceled meetings. That's why they weren't talking about it. They weren't even there. I know for a fact, one of the people that put in a bid is constantly involved with the community, does more than, than anybody on the TDC that brings. And if you, if you would do a survey, the people that are coming here now come because their parents came here. It's not because of an ad they saw in Guns or Us magazine.
Ms. Chairman, excuse me, do you have any, we called for public comment on the motion we were making. Do you have anything about that motion?
The motion to.
The motion to have the negotiation or the discussion about what's in the current contract for administration and how much administration's being compensated, and is there a difference? That's what we open public comment for.
And, and you're saying the administration should be paying more?
No, ma'am. We're saying we should negotiate and see if there's any difference between what administration is currently being paid and what's in the current adopted budget amount. That's all we're saying. That's what we called for public comment for. So do you have any public comment about that?
No, I'll leave.
Thank you.
Do you have one, Mr. John Berry?
Uh-huh.
Great. Hey, Mr. Berry, I'm muted. Okay, you're muted.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, I think you're stepping off in touchy area with a variable pricing contract. You probably went out with a fixed-price contract in the first place, and now to come along and throw a percentage based upon, if I understand what you're discussing, put a percentage based upon collections, I don't know if that's a kosher way of doing business or not, but I think I'd have somebody check into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. And just to assure you, that's not what we're discussing. Years ago, when they started the TDC board, the administration contract was based on a percentage, because the collections were a lot less. But currently, it is a fixed-based price. What, the only thing that I understand, unless the board wants to correct me, that we're looking at today, is in our current budgeted amount for administration, it's already been decided in our current budget. Is there a difference between that and what the administration's currently being paid? If so, what we want to do about it, it sounds like we're probably taking it in front of the TDC board to get their way in, but that's all we're voting on here today.
And we went out for RFQs, not for RFPs, so it was based on qualifications, not for any particular price.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can.
Thank you. I just want to clear anything up. As the administration itself, we wouldn't want a percentage-based either, because that would be way too much money, honestly. The TDC board, this year, when they put the budget together, they voted to increase the vendors and the administration and put it in the budget for y'all's approval. That was their recommendation when we, when we did it at that point, for the vendors to be able to get paid more and the administration to be able to get paid more. But still, on y'all's decision whether you want to do it or not, and not a percentage base, because percentage base would just throw the things just way out of whack, uncalled for.
So let me ask Commissioner Lockley, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Commissioner Lockley, do you want to amend your motion to include a recommendation from the TDC board as part of the negotiations, or no? That's what I've heard this morning. I'm just going to.
Yeah, you can take it back to them. I want to make sure the people getting paid fair.
Commissioner.
I'm going to say.
Okay, so I'm going to include that in the motion, okay?
So the, I'm not asking for no percentage. I know the percentage of what. That'll be too high. I know that. I know we not trying to go there.
Okay. So the motion has been amended, and the second has been amended to reflect, we're taking this back to the TDC board first.
Yes.
And then we'll come back.
Their opinion, and then we could start the negotiations.
Okay. Any more discussion, Commissioners, forward. We have received public comment on the item that was not on our agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just wanted to recognize, obviously, the comments we've had today, excuse me, obviously, the comments we've had today about the influx of tourism that's been coming into our county, what a tremendous compliment it is to our county to have the people come here and enjoy our ambiance. It also underscores the importance of infrastructure, that, that underlying web of support that we have here in the community for the people who come from far and wide to enjoy our environment. And that includes a hospital. And that includes a hospital. And all the infrastructure and the importance of the value of people and their health. And I just wanted to, to mention that, just as one of the very strong benefits that we have that complements the TDC.
Mr. Chairman, I got one question.
Go ahead.
John, while he's there.
Yep.
As, as it relates to just, just statistical data that's been mentioned before on all the different things, you know, all that's on your website, right?
Yes, sir.
And that address is?
Florida's ForgottenCoast.com.
Okay, so I want to put that out there for the public. So any statistical data that they need coming from the TDC will be on that particular website.
It's not proprietary, like the chairman mentioned earlier. It's not proprietary for.
Anything that's not proprietary. We do have some software and some different stuff, in other words, that we are able to look at, but it's inscription-based, so we can't just give it out.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just saying, anybody in the public that wants to go on and see what TDC's doing and to get statistical data, go to that website, and all that information is readily available.
Yeah, our collections, our internet report, our media reports are all on there from each meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, John, how, how often do y'all update the website?
With that information, after each meeting.
Okay.
When, when the minutes get completed and sent to the internet provider, they post them on the website almost immediately. Most of the agenda is posted on there the day of the meeting or two days before.
Mrs. Solomon, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Ted Musstever, airport manager.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Seth. Michael.
Oh, I'll be there. Give me one sec.
Don't let this scare you. It's not as long, it won't take too much time, each one of them used to. In there, you have an updated report from today, and you have, as I have it at this moment, of the inventory that we did at the airport this past week. The main thing that you're looking for, I think, would be on the very last two pages of that packet. And it gives the aircraft that we found at the airport. Yeah, it's not in that one. There were a total of 55 at the airport, 55 aircraft. And in the tea hangers, there were 47. There were two hangers that are not occupied by aircraft, and Michael has, is going to talk to one of the owners. One of the problems at that particular tea hanger is the storm sewer concrete around, the concrete around the storm sewer grate is sinking, and it's a hazard for the aircraft to taxi over it. So that's a reasonable one of them. Have you?
What's, what, I'm sorry, what's the other, where's the other one? I thought it was only one.
Well, there's only one, actually, but there was a second one that was in question.
What, what's in there?
Just household stuff.
No, I thought it had some kind of plane or kit plane that they were building or something.
Okay, well, I count that as, it has a tail number.
Yeah.
And speaking of tail numbers, that's part of what I'm researching. Some of the tail numbers that were given that are on those aircraft are destroyed aircraft, they're old aircraft that have been decommissioned.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to research and find out why that number is on that aircraft.
Okay, cool. But for the most, so, and it's one of the items in my report, actually, item three, addresses what Ted is talking about with this, the apron rehab project. So the board is aware, FAA is funding an apron rehab project at the airport. To avoid, avoid using airport funds for a match, Mr. Collins of AFCON was able to allow the use of FDOT funds as a match for this project. To proceed with using FDOT funds for the match, the chairman's signature is required under supplemental amendment, that's for G1J91, to the grant agreement and the required resolution. This action does not add any funds to the project, only allows the county to use FDOT funds as a required 10% match for this FAA-funded project. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature. So Ted is absolutely correct. So basically, the one, the one tea hanger that's being used for non-aeronautical airplane, whatever, right in front of it, it's like, it's a drop, you know? Well, the concrete, the concrete drop. So it's really bad for the planes. You know how, how your car does when it has to go with something like that? It's worse for the planes. It was explained to me by Ted and Andrew from.
Because they don't have any shocks.
We don't want any problems.
That's right. So that's why there's not a rush to get that one client out of that hangar, because they're afraid that we don't want to rent it to another plane and then the plane is damaged in any, any way. So as soon as this project is completed, though, yeah, prior to the project being completed, Ted, again, Ted is correct, I'm going to have a conversation with that particular gentleman and let him know, look, you know, we're going to have to find somewhere else, because we have to get it rented. But Ted says too, I thought I saw one, I'll go back and check my notes, but it's not this whole, you know, I was told, and this a while back, and the board was told, you know, that there were many hangers out there that had just household items in it. That is not true. Now, what Ted does have to figure out, and then we get with John, and we go with FAA, is if the tail number is invalid, how does the FAA feel about storing a plane with an invalid tail number in there? We don't know if one has anything to do with the other, because we were looking at two things. I was looking on behalf of the board to see how many hangers were being used with planes, other aeronautical use, whatever. Ted was looking for it to create a database that's needed to send to FAA to, to add to the database of where planes are, because, and Ted just jump on in, after you send that information, what FAA does, they look nationwide as to how many places that tail number is registered, and they determine, basically homestead for the airplane. Yeah. After the lack of a better term, you know? So that's what Ted was doing, and I was looking on behalf of the board, and I think we're in good shape for the tea hangers. There's a couple other hangers Ted and I are going to deal with later on, as time comes.
Chairman.
Yes.
On that thing with, you said got a drop, do it need a ramp?
It would need like a, you know, Commissioner, you've done probably yourself, like, like a concrete kind of filter to stop that. But you guys just, well, have we get a motion yet?
I think we're in the middle of a motion, haven't we?
Oh, my bad. So you guys are about to approve this.
Is that right there?
Oh, I don't think we have a motion.
Yeah, okay.
I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, well, we'll have to make another one if we have to. But this item I'm bringing before you Commissioners, this is a 10%, this is again, the 10% match to do that project to fix the entire apron, because there are other issues too, and Ted could tell you more, where the, the, it's sinking on certain parts. So there's a lot of work that has to be done, but once again, I'm glad that the county did not have to come up with any match at all. John was able to work out where FDOT will fund 10% of the project, which will eliminate the use for the county, the need for the county to take out, you know, money from the airport funds to get this project done.
Ted, you know what it need. You been out there long enough.
Sir.
You know what it need to fix it, don't?
Yes, sir. Basically, what you have, everything is in concrete panels. And, you know, on a sidewalk, this panel may sink. That's what's happened. You got about a four-inch lip that you have to bounce over to get into this tea hanger, or get across this swell, which is swell is where the water runs down in front of the tea hangers. And say, a Mooney aircraft, you have four to six inches clearance between the prop and the concrete.
Yeah.
And if you hit that thing and it bounces, you got a prop strike, you got an engine tear down, you got a very expensive situation. And we don't want that.
Ted, what was that plane? There were like three or four of them? That's a million bucks. What's the, what's that model plane that was in seven hangers? No, it's not a King Air.
You were talking about the diesel?
Yes.
The twin-engine diesel?
Yeah, that plane that everybody's buying, that's so.
Oh, the Cirrus?
That could be it.
This is a Cirrus aircraft, it's a single-engine aircraft that, for instance, John Bone has flown around the world twice with his, which is in his hangar. And also, he went to Ukraine recently for several months to, on a relief trip.
Yeah, when Andrew and Ted said, you see this plane, it's about a million bucks? I was like, say again? I was like, and there's like three or four of them out there, you know?
Oh, at least that.
Yeah, and then we saw one.
They're all listed in the, in that report.
And we actually saw one coming in for landing while we were standing there. That's very cool. Very, very cool.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Let me, let me get back to the tea hangers. If, if the tail number's bad or what, that ain't got nothing to do with a plane being in that hangar.
That's correct.
That's correct.
I mean, so.
So you said.
So we're hearing that there's two, two hangers that are occupied by, but now I'm hearing there's only one.
Yeah.
Because this other one has a plane in it. Regardless of the tail number and all this stuff, it's still a plane in a tea hanger.
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
So really, we're down to one that's got.
That has circum.
Something that is not airport-related stored in it.
Yeah.
Out of all these tea hangers, and of all the chaos, there's only one.
Yes.
And it's at the place that the apron needs to be repaired, and we're going to do that.
Yes.
We just approve the matching, you know, using DOT funds as a match and all that. So we're actually, there's one tea hanger out there that has stuff in there that's not airport-related.
That's right.
Is that correct?
That's correct. As far as I know, that's correct. Based on my expectation of my notes.
You know, I hear one, then I hear two, now we back down to one.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify all the.
Yes.
Commissioner, if I may, there are people who rent those tea hangers, and it's so reflected in this report, that don't live here. They say they're from Atlanta, but they rent, they fly down, they stay here a week, two weeks, weekend, whatever. But their vehicle may be parked in there, and, and while they're in Atlanta, say. And, but when they fly into Appalachia Cola, they own a house here, visit, whatever their, the business is, that's when that hangar is occupied. business is, uh, that's when that hangar is occupied. But they rent the hangar year round so that they'll have a place to park their aircraft when they get here. We count that as an airplane in that hangar.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine.
Yes.
That's not, that's not no kind of controversy or anything.
That's, that's done everywhere. That's, you know, yeah. I park my car in the hangar. I take my plane out, put my car there until I get back. No matter where you're from, it doesn't matter, you know? But the primary use of that hangar, that T hangar, is to park your plane.
Yeah. I mean, so that's not an issue for me.
Mr. Chairman?
They own a plane?
And when they hear they parked it there, and they pay you in every month. Yeah.
However, Ted, you're saying that there are some hangars that have some aircraft in it or some assignment with a ta- tail number that is obsolete, historically proven damaged. The airplane's really not there.
Matter of fact, sir, one of these tail numbers is a jet.
It's a ghost.
A big business jet.
It's a, it's a jet?
Yeah. That's what the tail number comes up on the FAA registry.
Yeah, right. But not in there.
It's, of course not.
But it's also shown the record-
The jet's probably bigger than the entire T hangar building.
Right. And, and aside from the fact that people are using T hangars, you know, they're paying for the convenience of a T hangar, um, there are some apparently that have a aircraft in, noted in that T hangar that has actually had a record of being destroyed.
Yes, sir.
And when you open the T hangar door, there's no airplane in that hangar.
No, there, there's an aircraft there.
There's a plane, but not the right one.
That's correct.
There, okay.
That's what I'm researching to try to bring up to date.
Right.
Why it's not on FAA registry. Good question. Maybe it's in the process of being registered.
Yes.
And the paperwork is a little behind time or something.
Right. This ultimately, when we get this all straight, it means more money for the airport.
Well-
No.
No, there's a plane in there.
No, if, if there's a plane in there and they're paying rent.
If it has no tail number, still an airplane in that T hangar.
And Commissioner Bolt, if FAA says they don't have any issue with that, that doesn't change the grants that we get or don't get.
There you go.
You know? So that's what we're going to investigate, that, you know, that how does that ta- that number, that tail number affect, you know, how they look at the use of the hangar. That's all we care about as far as the county is concerned.
Okay.
Correct.
Now, did we take action on your item?
We probably didn't, sir. So I, and I don't know if we did, so if we could, just get a motion and a second, we could-
We had a-
Oh, Commissioner Lockley?
I'm trying to remember.
You didn't make a motion?
To use a matching funds, FDOT, FDOT money for matching funds. Yeah, he made the motion, I made the second.
Oh, all right.
Just making sure.
Skip, forget, forget.
We're, uh, I'm not the parliamentarian, sir. I'm just here trying to make sure we vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's your names.
And if I could do number four, it's also airport related. Um, your FBO, your fixed base operator contract with the county expired yesterday, October 31st. Staff recently met with FAA, Aaron, Michelle, Ted, and, uh, to discuss language for new contract. Staff worked with Centric and John Collins of AFCON and submitted a draft agreement to the FAA for their review. Once that draft agreement is approved by the FAA, it will be presented to this board for your review and acceptance. This process may take up to 45 days, so I'm recommending that the board extend the current contract for 60 days. The board is in favor of an extension, Attorney Schuler should be authorized to create that addendum to the current contract. So board action to extend that contract for 60 days. I didn't put that in the motion and authorize Attorney Schuler to create addendum for that contract.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Paris, second by Commissioner Lockley. And sir, just to clarify, we're extending this current contract. Cause we're waiting on the FAA to get back with us about-
Yes. So, uh, as we discussed, yeah, and I, I was looking at Commissioner Lockley because as we discussed the last time, if they have it sooner, you know, and it's approved and you guys approve it, then we'll go, we'll start that date with the new contract.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a comment if you don't mind. Um, there's a motion on the, on the floor. I, I think that, you know, I'm all good with this, but I, I would like a current contract that Centric, if you don't mind. I don't know if we have it available, but I'd like to take a look at it.
Yeah.
And, and moving forward, I guess the FAA decides, is it the FAA decides or we decide how long we want this contract extension to be or the contract to be for?
The length is on you. Certain language we're clearing with them.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
And we will, we'll be, we'll be voting that, on that after they do their thing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So five of a, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, uh, commissioners, uh, we'll make one quick comment on the other T hangar that's not being used for aviation purposes. It's a helicopter T hangar. And, uh, that's maybe a misnomer, but, uh, because you cannot get an aircraft in there with wings. It's just for a fixed wing. Usually the wings on these smaller helicopters fold up. And there is a boat and some other items in there that, uh, but that is a T hangar.
That's one on the end, that funny shaped T hangar.
The one that's got the high-rise roof.
Yes. Okay, so the helicopter does not count as, as-
It's an aircraft, yes, but there's no hel- we don't have a helicopter based here now. It was built back in the, um, eight, uh, nineties for, uh, Warner Robinowich, the Marine, uh, pilot.
Okay.
Marine Patrol pilot. And of course he's moved on and, uh, Marine Patrol has changed their-
It's now FWC?
FWC, you know the drill. But we do not have an air, uh, helicopter that we can put in that. And the door opening is too narrow for a winged aircraft. And there's no real way structurally to make it wider. We've looked at it before. So, uh, that is another one that's being used for mostly non-aviation purposes.
I will ask Ted and John to check with FAA and see if we can get any exemption on that particular T hangar because if it's not wide enough for a plane, but we do have a current tenant that has a helicopter in there, can we keep collecting rent from that client and see if they, if they have no issue with that?
If we get a helicopter, it'll go in there.
Yes.
I see a lot of helicopters be flying over. They, they just be stopped by-
Well, at that point, we had one based here. That was the Marine Patrol helicopter, Little Bell helicopter.
But I'm talking about now, I see a lot of them just-
Most of them-
Coming over my house.
Yeah, they just-
Get gas and go.
Okay. I, yeah, I was a little confused. I thought they, I thought Andrew said they do put a helicopter in there.
Occasionally it could happen.
Yeah, I thought he said there was one in there. So that's why I didn't-
There's not at the moment.
Okay, yeah. I'll, I'll double check. We need to get with that client and find out.
Mr. Chairman, now we have one, this hangar that Mr. Ted is referring to is empty right now?
No, sir.
It has a boat in it.
Yes, it's boat. And I thought Andrew said he brings a helicopter from there from time to time, is what I thought was said, but I'll double check and see. That's why I didn't count that one because I thought there was a helicopter in there, you know?
So it's in addition to the one that's non-conforming?
That's right. That is correct. So that's the second one Ted is referring to and-
If you look on the diagram, it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, unit number one on the C building, Charlie building.
It's very odd shape. You'd have to be, see it to understand, but yeah. All right, Ted, let's check, check that out and let me know.
Anything else from Mr. Ted?
Sir?
I'm just making sure there's nothing else from the commission for you before you-
Well, I, I do like to make a couple of quick comments if I may, and I'll be done.
Yes, sir.
Um, as most of you know, I think all of you probably know by now, uh, Governor DeSantis paid us a visit last Friday. And even though it was a political event, uh, it's great PR for our airport and our county. So it, it was deemed a success and, uh, everybody was, came away happy, I think. Commissioner, Chairman, you were there?
Yeah, it was good.
Hey Ted, if I could, I'm glad you brought that up. So what I, uh, job, job left already? So the TDC was, someone was taking pictures on behalf of the TDC out there. So we're going to get copies of those pictures. That will go to AFCON. They will start using that and to Roy at, um, Opportunity Florida.
Yep.
And anybody else that was, uh, Florida Great Northwest, we're going to send those pictures on and they will make them part of our file from now on as we apply for grants and stuff to show that the governor was there. He used that, the airport as a rally. So I just want to let you know that, Commissioner.
We had a guestimate of about 500 people. Chairman, can you-
That's about right. That's about right.
And it, I'd say it came off great, so. Okay, uh, I think that's about it for me. If you have any other questions?
Does anyone have any further questions for Mr. Ted? Thank you, Mr. Ted. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you would, let's recess to 10:35.
Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. Next, Dr. Sandra Brooke with an Appalachia Cola Bay System Initiative update. Morning, doctor.
Good morning.
Time for you to present. There you go.
Yeah, my, whoops. I am not apple savvy, I'm afraid. Michael, could I ask you to drive?
Click there.
Yep. And present. If it doesn't want to. Oh, yes, it does. Okay. All right. Yes, thank you. We're having some technical difficulties with my presentation here. So I have been asked to come and give an update on what A B C is up to. So I will, I will do that, but I'm going to address in, in the, in all the conversations and presentations that I've done, these are the two common questions that keep coming up, not questions about the nuts and bolts of A B C science, but these seem to be the most common questions, the things that are on people's minds. So I'm going to try and address at least those. So this is, this is where it's kind of, it's all gone peculiar. Now, I have shown my tonguing survey data before, but essentially what it shows is that there are some bright spots in the bay, but most of it is not doing well, especially the west side of the bay. So that's kind of the message from F S U's data. This was a graph. Again, I have shown it before, but what it shows is that most of those, in those sites where we have oysters, most of them are spat. Across the bay as a whole, there's very few market sizes, but there are a few sites, especially in the east side, Monkey's Elbow Platform, Bolt Head, Cat Point, Lighthouse. Some of these sites are doing okay. Right? So that's fine. I've shown those before. What I'd like to show today is actually not my data. It's the F W C and the Florida D E P data. So if you don't believe or trust F S U, I just want to show you that it's corroborated by the agency data as well. So this graph, this map is a little confusing. So the little yellow squares or the dots are restoration sites that Florida D E P is in charge of. They were deployed using lime rock, small lime rock in 2017. Then the, there's another project that was also funded, both these projects were funded by oil spill funds. Those are the little green dots, and they are the Nerd planted sites. Essentially, they were planted in 2017 using fossilized shell. All right. So these are the restoration sites I'm going to show you data for. F W C also has some monitoring sites that they go to. Okay. So here we have the Florida D E P Restore Project. This actually was deployed in 2017 using the small lime rock, as I said. They have three rounds of sampling that they've already done. Now, this is scuba diving, the quadrat data. They translated their data into bags per acre. So you see here, round one and round two, there's virtually nothing there on any of these sites. It's pretty much zero market size. Now, this is harvestable market size data, all right, not spat and seed, market size, zero. Now, round three, you're seeing that there are three sites that have reached over that threshold of 300 bags an acre, which will possibly allow a limited fishery. Okay? Just three of those sites. Now, something else I'd like to point out is that between round two and round three, the fishery closure was enacted. So you went from zero to at least some success in these sites after the fishery closure was enacted. Okay? So the Nerd Project, which was one that used fossilized shell, that was actually deployed in 2015, not 2017 as the other, as the map indicated. So again, they've done four rounds of sampling on these sites. The round four was most recent. That was last summer. And you can see, again, the, this one isn't doing so well. The fossilized shell sites are not doing as well. But you're getting, so the highest one there, I think, is around 24 bags an acre, which is nowhere near what we need to be at to even think about a fishery. But again, if you look at the difference between round three and round four, which is when the fishery was closed, you're going from pretty much zero across the board to at least something coming through. So that fishery closure, now there were other things that went on, you know, between those, those sampling dates, but it's pretty instructive that for both of those projects, different materials, different planting sites, different sampling dates, that between the, between the pre and the post closure, we're starting to see some success. But only three of those, total of 30 sites, over 450 acres have shown any, that they have reached that 300 bags per acre threshold. And the other thing to remember is that the actual data was 20 or so little quadrats within that site, within those sites. And those little quadrats were then extrapolated up. And we know that those areas that were planted are not consistent across the board. They may have reached a, you know, good spot. They may have reached a not so good spot. It may be better, it may be worse, but there's an uncertainty in these, these numbers because of that extrapolation from tiny areas up to a big area. Okay? But signs that something might, good might be happening in some of these areas. This is the F W C monitoring. I apologize, it's a bit teeny tiny. These were the, these are the 2022 data from F W C, their monitoring programs. There you see all the different sites. Some of this has been cut off, but, but it's pretty much across the bay, you know, east and west. And you can see the bags per acre. They jump around, you know, I think the highest one there I can see is 58 from Cabbage Top back in March. But again, far, far below what we could even think about opening a fishery. So that's the state of the bay. That's what, that's where we are. That's what we've got. Now, we're planning on doing another round of tongging. We're going to make it more extensive, more data points, so that we can get more coverage. And we've, we've taken people out to look at the bay. Representative Schoeff has gone out with F W C to see different parts of the bay. Commissioner Ward came out with us. And I'd just like to extend the invitation to the rest of the commission that if you want to come out with us, we have the permits, we have the maps, we can go wherever you want. We can spend as much time out there as you want to feel comfortable with what you're seeing. So I think, you know, looking at these tables and graphs is, is one thing, but actually seeing for yourselves, especially people that know what the oyster fishery should look like, I think it would be instructive, and you're very welcome. Just give me a call. So our restoration experiments, as we know, I'm not going to belabor this because I've presented it before, but we are doing experiments to try and optimize the restoration approach since the other approaches haven't given us what we really wanted in terms of biological response. The oysters haven't really come back. So this, again, is just our, this layout of our restoration experiment. We leave small lime rock, large lime rock, and shell, two different places, five replicates. We went out in August and September and did some tong sampling and also some diving so we could cross-reference those two methods. And if you look here, we, this is our large lime rock site from Peanut Ridge or one of them. And we're getting some of those clumps. Now, I know the oystermen don't like those clumps, but this is how reefs grow. And if you, if you look at those bins, this is one of our sites, and, and there are quite a few fairly big oysters and some markets in there. They're doing, they're doing pretty well, better than the other materials are. And this is just a graph showing that, Peanut Ridge and Dry Bar. So the problem that we've had is not getting spat set, it's getting those spat through the juvenile stage into markets. That's where we're seeing the mortality. So that's what we want to try and accomplish is to get those seed oysters through to market. And as you can see, we're starting to see that, and we see it better on the large lime rock. It really seems to be doing pretty well. Shell's doing well, too, but the problem with shell is it's not terribly stable and it spreads out. It's also really hard to get hold of. So I'm going to talk about our second round of rest, that, so that material has only been out for just over a year, about 16 months, and we're already seeing markets. So, so that's good. So what we'd like to do now is, we're proposing in the spring, coming up, is to have two sites, one on Cat Point and one on East Hall. And there are a number of reasons why we've chosen those sites, which I won't sort of get into in this, for the sake of time. But the problem we had with Peanut Ridge is the very, very strong currents and waves and material got spread out. So these areas are also good areas. Again, we've used our models, we've talked to people, and these are good sites. East Hall is a little problematic because there's, we, we'd like to have the oysterman help us do it again, and there isn't anywhere that we can really launch from on St. George Island. So we're, we're working on that. So what we're proposing is, again, Cat Point and East Hall, two different treatments, again, five replicates for statistics, two sites. The reef height, we're looking at 25 centimeters or 10 inches. This is similar to what we did last time. It seems to be doing well. Now, we could go really high, but there's, there's this cost trade-off between your reef height and your footprint. So since we don't have, or F W C doesn't have an unlimited amount of money, trying to find that optimal height where you get the response that you want from the oysters, but you want to maximize your footprint. So this is one of the reef heights that we're going to try. It's a little bit lower than the literature says. It's optimal, but this is what we're going to try and do. And that six to eight inch material seems to be doing really well, so we're going to stick with that. But what we're going to do is try different material types. So the lime rock, we know it works. It occurs naturally in Florida. It's readily available. Concrete, now this is something that's been brought up in the past. Concrete is available. It's not natural, but we know oysters grow on it. It's less expensive. It's a little bit of an unknown. It's not free because you have to clean it and crush it. So there is an expense involved with it. It's also inconsistent. I discovered at the last F W C meeting that there's such a thing as floating concrete, which I'd never heard of before. So we don't want floating concrete. We want it to sink, obviously. So we've got some concrete that we've stockpiled. It's about the same size, so we're going to use that. Now, shell, obviously, everybody wants shell. It's not readily available. I'm going to work with David Barber and Steve Rash to see if we can start stockpiling shell, to see if we can get a shell treatment in there as well. It's, it's really hard to get hold of. I would like to do shell on those two sites just because it's, obviously, it's the gold standard material, and the currents are slightly lower. So we're going to see if we can, we can use shell. It may be that we combine it with the other materials if we can't get enough. So we're still sort of working with that. The shell has shown good response for obvious reasons. It's what the oyster's like. So our community engagement, just a quick update on that. We've had, we've had a number of community advisory board meetings throughout the year. We have them every other month. The last was the 18th of October. We had an oysterman's workshop that night, and also a community workshop the following day at the East Point Fire Station. Attendance wasn't great. We'd really like more people to come and give us their feedback. This is not for us to talk to the community. It's for the community to understand what we're trying to do and talk to us and give us their response. So we'd really like for people to attend, especially the oysterman. We, we didn't have very many show up. In 2023, we've got six community advisory board meetings, and we're working through reviewing management options and hopefully adopt a final management and restoration plan in November. At that point, our community advisory board will stop. It will end. It's not the end of the project, but our plan is to have a successor group, which is going to be driven by members of the community, not F S U, members of the community to hopefully continue this process and make sure that that plan, at least parts of it anyway, are implemented, and the stakeholders are represented in management's decisions into the future. So that's, that's the plan for next year. We've got two more community workshops and one more oysterman's workshop planned. We can increase those if there's interest. So I'm going to go through these quickly, and really, I don't want to dwell on the details, but our second goal of our management plan is sustainable management of oyster resources. These are options to be evaluated. They are not, they are not part of the plan. They're not part of anybody's plan. They are merely options. So we have limited entry. I know that's been talked about and thrown about, and so, yes, it is an option that we are evaluating. The summer closure, that's something that hasn't received a lot of pushback. It seems like, you know, some of the oystermen might be on board with that. But the other side of that is if you close during the summer, you'd have all of the legal, and F D A C's approved. Obviously, F D A C has a say in what, what remains open because of health issues. These are legal and F D A C approves harvest areas would be open during the harvest season. So you wouldn't have the summer and winter closure areas. You'd have the whole bay open, but not during the summer, if that makes sense. Monday to Friday, harvest week, daily bag limits. Recreational harvest limit would be the same as the commercial harvest with the same gear type. Establish or enforce that 5% undersized. Now, what we're hearing is that that 5% undersized allowance was kind of creeping up a little bit just before the bay closed. So you got two and a half inches creeping in there when they, they really shouldn't have been. Implement stock-based temporary harvest closures. So this is part of the adaptive, part of the management plan, so that you don't get to the end of the season and realize that some of the reefs are depleted. You kind of manage as you go. Now, that will require a more sort of nimble and frequent monitoring plan, so that we can see what's going on with the, not we, F W C can see what's going on with the oysters as the year progresses, as the season progresses, rather than just leaving it to the end. Okay? Annual stock assessment to establish a sustainable level of harvest. So this essentially would be an annual quota. So that's something new as well. Permanent closed areas. Now, these may be in some of the, you know, more popular harvest areas, but they may also be in sites that are not good for harvest anymore because of health issues, like some of the ones in the summer area. So again, these are all just options. Nothing has been decided, and nothing has been recommended. Put and take fishery. Do we sort of try and reinstate a shelling program so that we can replenish the reefs for harvest? So that's something that, you know, call it a reshelling program, call it put and take fishery. This is something else that's being considered. And then work with Ellie to develop strategies and penalties for regulations. So we know that those are in place already, but obviously, if new management strategies are brought in, they'll need regulations and penalties associated with them.
Dr. Brooke, who's evaluating all of these metrics?
The community advisory board, but again, we'd like stakeholder input, and we're not getting it.
Understand. Well, the reason I'm asking is because any number of these, so if you have a limited entry fishery, it's kind of hard, hard, or very difficult to also have daily bag limits and a seasonal limit.
Sure.
You've already limited entry.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? So.
So you wouldn't have all of these. This is just, again, this is just options.
Well, that's, that's why I was asking. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, these are just options, and it may be that limited entry is off the table. And so then we go to, okay, how else can we manage it? We might pick four and five, whatever, you know, so, yeah.
Okay.
So we're evaluating those options. So in the end, we'll make recommendations to F W C. Okay? They can implement, partly implement, or completely ignore the cab recommendations. We have no control over that. So this is just, this is what the stakeholders think, and you can do as you please with the management. Okay. So that's, that's kind of what I wanted to say about that. I'd just like to take a couple of seconds to introduce a postdoc who's, she's a social sciences postdoc. Her name's Betsy. She really would like to talk to the fishermen and stakeholders to try and gauge their sense of, or their opinions on these management strategies, how they think the bay is historical, oyster fisheries, how things have changed, all that, that kind of thing. So if you're interested or are willing to talk to her, then we're happy to share her contact information. And she will be coming and asking you guys separately. I just thought I'd give you a warning that she's on the prowl.
Sounds good.
All right. So I'll take questions if you have any.
Dr. Brooks, has your research team taken, taken into account the parameters of the water environment in which these oysters are growing relative to the political issues we've heard about water being limited north of us and, and looking at the nutrient levels, the pH levels, and that type of thing? And what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so we have, the modelers are taking all that data into consideration, and that's one of the things that we're using to try and identify places that, I mean, we know where the historic areas are. that, I mean, we know where the historic areas are. Um, but we're also using that information to try and gauge where the areas might be good now. And, you know, it's all pointing towards that east side of the bay, especially Cat Point. During dry seasons, there are still parts of the bay over there that are reasonably, you know, they're in fairly good conditions, other parts of the bay not so much, like Dry Bar. So we are using sort of science to sort of validate what we, we are seeing intuitively and what people sort of intuitively know. Did that answer your question?
Yes, that's.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Doctor, if y'all beat success, I mean, it looked like you having some, some success. If y'all get to beat yourself, let's say eighty percent, hundred, even a hundred. Who gonna, as the oysterman go out there every day, take out the shell? You know, most of, most of your bags, they sell them in bags. People pass through, they take the shells with them. Who gonna put back what they take when y'all leave? I mean, who gonna, who gonna do a reshelling?
Yeah, so it used to be F D A X, right? And then they stopped that, so that's, maybe F D A X will do it again, but they need money. I mean, this, this reshelling isn't going to be free. And the other problem is getting shell. So, you know, we know the oysters coming in from Louisiana, Louisiana's coming and taking their shell back and taking it back to Louisiana. So getting shell is a problem, it may not be shell, it may be something else, you know. But, but yeah, there's going to have to be money in the legislature or some kind of way of getting funding for that, whether it's bag tax or whatever it is. How this is going to all work is to be determined, but if people think it's a good idea, that's the next step, is figure out whether we can make it happen. Does that answer your question?
We're not in the plan right now.
It's, it, well, I mean, we don't have the money for it, you know, and this grant ends in June twenty twenty-four. So, you know, all we can do is make recommendations and then kick it over to the agencies to try and figure out how to make that happen, if that's something that they think is a good idea.
Just like going in the icebox, if you go in your icebox, you pull out meat every day. Starting Monday, Friday gonna be low. If you don't put none in there Saturday, Sunday it gonna be empty.
Yeah, I mean, it may not, like I said, these are just ideas. And so this is why we want feedback from people. Um, these are ideas that actually were, you know, brought up by the cab and looking at the way other oyster fisheries are managed. So if this is something that is any of these things, if it's not going to work, or if it's going to get a lot of pushback and the, and F W C is going to decide not to do it, then it would be helpful to know that.
Well, my last, again, my last question would be, is there any way we can get a sit-down between you and the other people doing the study and the people?
Yes, absolutely, anytime you want. And, um, I think, uh, John, oh, what's his name? I forget, Kramer, John Kramer, from F W C. I think he's been working with Michael, right, to get, to come and give a presentation to you. Would you like to speak to that, Michael?
Actually, yes, I just got the email, Commissioner Ward and I were looking it over. So he should be here on, at your Tuesday, December sixth meet, meeting to make a presentation.
From F W C?
Yes, sir, the regional director, Ms. Kramer. So he'll be here, because the, the board did ask about that a while back, so we've worked out a day, December sixth.
Is that gonna be all of them or just him?
That's just F W C, him and a couple of other F W C representatives, I, I don't know about anybody else. What you're asking for is a sit-down with all, like a roundtable.
Around table with all, you know, like, F W C, your.
Florida D E P.
Your department.
Yeah.
Yep, even F D A X, we can do that, whenever you want.
How many department it is altogether?
Many, maybe too many, I don't know.
Somewhere between eight and ten, isn't it?
Yeah.
Total?
If the board remembers, Commissioner Bolden asked, we had started talking about that like months and months ago, trying to get there, but it was just hard to get everybody. They weren't at the point where they are now that we're able to kind of corral everybody together. I think we're in a better position now, but that was Commissioner Bold's idea from months ago.
Well, we can't get them all, half of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, no, we'd be happy to do that, whatever you like.
As long as one half includes the F W C, because ultimately, they're the ones going to make the decision.
Absolutely.
You know, uh, Dr. I want to ask you, in, in the slide, one of the things that was mentioned was some of the material you guys are putting. Are y'all putting material that's as much as eight inches in length out there?
Um, it's, it's called, um, oh, what's it called? It's like sub-eight, so eight is the maximum.
Okay.
So, but it is tongable, right? So, so we're not using anything, it's, it's hard.
It's heavy.
But it, it's heavy, yeah. But eight is the big, I, I forget the term.
Is the largest, okay.
Eight is the largest, but it ranges from about four to six.
Yeah.
And, uh, four to eight, sorry. And the nice thing about that is that it doesn't, well, let me back up. The smaller stuff tends to like pack down. Now, when you've got a thin layer of it, it's really easy to tong because you're going through a single layer and basically into the mud underneath. But on our sites where we've piled it up, it like packs down, it's like getting through a parking lot, you know, it's really hard to tong. Yeah, so you should come out, I'll show you.
Oh, yes, now we can get, and that's, that was one of the issues that's been brought up during this process. When oyster reefs, and, and it is natural for them to burr together, but when oyster reefs are not worked or broken up, it's just going to get more and more compact over time, more hard. And over time, it was, it, it might produce oysters to begin with, but if it's not worked or broken up, it's going to get to a point where it's not going to be producing. It might produce stuff on the top, but it's not going to be a full bar or, or a, a collection of material there, if you will. Uh, that, one of the other thoughts is, so about the shells, there's very few options we have because we have so many, so few oyster shucking houses here in the county anymore. Uh, but I know there are places out in some of our neighboring states that are actually buying our material. They're coming to buy about eighteen-wheeler load if they can. Uh, you know, so at what point can we not do the same thing and buy? You know, it's something F W C would have to do, but, and, and the same thing with, when, years ago, when they were trying to redo the Chesapeake Bay. I mean, they actually took harvestable oysters from the Great Relay. They took our bay and put it in their bay.
Yeah.
Well, they're doing good, so why can't we take some of their bay and put it back in there? I mean, you don't say it worked.
If they let us have it, yeah.
It, it worked, well, they, they let us, it worked.
There's a number of creative ways of getting shell if we decide that that's the way to do it.
Yes.
You know, the aquaculture industry, that, I mean, we, they don't produce the volume that we need, but they have these big die-offs.
Right.
Why not, we, we can accumulate their shell. I mean, it's, it's going to have to be stockpiled over time because it's not just in giant piles, but. Yeah, but I think, um, you know, somebody else brought up this, well, Louisiana's taking this, you know, coming in with eighteen-wheelers, taking the shell back. Apparently, that's part of the deal with them selling their oysters here, is that they get their shell back.
Right, so I'm saying, we need to do the same thing.
Yeah, we need to bring our oysters back, so we can sell them.
Dr. Brooks, relative to a substrate, and your discussion about the, the most ideal substrate for restoration of the bay appears to be the natural shell media. Um, can you reflect on this product that I have been shown early in my tenure called fossilized shell? I understand there's huge deposits of it just north of our county. Can fossilized shell be a, uh, uh, ideal substrate comparable to shell, to oyster shells? And it's right in our backyard.
Yeah, so fossilized shell was used, um, on the Florida D E P Nerdah sites. Um, it, some of those sites, especially in the eastern part of the bay, I, more than fifty percent, up to seventy-five percent of them have disappeared. The materials disappeared or have been silted over. The problem with fossilized shell is that it's variable quality and it's, it's shell that's sort of held together with smaller grains, so basically it falls apart.
I see.
Now, it may be that if you pile it up deep enough, then it might be good, but it just doesn't seem to last, is the thing, it falls apart. The other thing is that if, um, if it's not washed properly, then when you put it in, a lot of that material just sort of forms these big clouds of sediment, and I think that's happened in the past and it's sort of worried people.
I see.
Because it looks bad. So I don't think it's ideal, um, but it has been used, um, by, you know, in other places. It doesn't seem to be doing as well as some of this other material.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I got one question, because some of the slides you showed, when you look at Cat Point, it shows all zeros. Are there no oysters on Cat Point or the information is not being divulged?
Oh, it's been divulged, it, we're not hiding anything from you, um, let me go back.
I've never seen a zero.
Yeah, so, um, Cat Point, Cat Point, yeah, four point eight, that's not great.
No, that's not good at all.
That's not great, no.
Four point eight bag, excuse me, four point eight bags per acre?
No, but look at the others, that's not great either, none of them are doing well. But you're right, it's, it's not doing great. Um, the, the places further south, Monkey's Elbow and Peanut Ridge, Platform, those areas are doing better. But the problem with those areas, that, that's where we put one of our previous experiment, but the currents are so strong, sometimes it's almost unworkable and the, and the, the other materials, like the shell, gets just spread out and flattened. So we thought we'd try Cat Point. Um, now, if you look over, uh, just because it's historically a good area, but there's, there's very little material there. Now, if you look over here to the Restore Project, um, ninety-seven, that's not great either, but it's, it's got something. So, you know, Cat Point is a, a site that's got good environmental conditions, but for some reason, it's not doing as well as the, you know, the other sites, some of the other sites. And East Hall, um, that apparently, there was some, some restoration done in East Hall a few years ago, and it was closed for eighteen months, and it got up to something like nine hundred bushels an acre, and then it was opened up again and, you know, it was fished out. But East Hall is, is somewhere that also looks like a reasonable restoration site.
Is, is it also true to say that if it's ever opened back up in this Apalachicola Bay Management Plan, it's going to be different than what your native oystermen are used to? From closure in the summer, we all, we all live around when the bay closes in the summer, and I don't have a problem with that myself. But all these other things about the Monday through Friday work week, a limited amount of oysters you can catch. Of course, it all goes back to trying to have a sustainable harvest, I understand that, but, but it's not what they're accustomed to.
No.
So it's, you know, and if you have limited entry, all these different options that you put out here, and you don't know if any of them will be implemented or all of them will be implemented. It's supposed to be all part of a, a quote, Apalachicola Bay Management Plan to try to obtain a, a sustainable harvest. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, right?
Yeah, so we don't end up back in the situation where the bay's closed. That's the goal. But the oysters have to bring the bay back, you know, we can only, all we can do is try and figure out the best way to help them. They've got to be, if we don't leave them alone.
And another thing, you know, I, I talked about this extensively at the last meeting, which I'm probably sure is what triggered your being here today. But also, what I discussed at the last meeting was, if we don't have oysters in this bay, we're going to end up with a dead bay. That trickles down to your guide fishermen. They're going to be out of work because there's no fish out there for them to catch, because there's nothing for the fish to feed on, I mean. So without these oysters in this bay, it's going to be a trickle-down effect on a number of different species and a number of different jobs that people are currently holding right now because there is no oyster industry. Uh, it's going to affect your shrimping, it's going to affect your, uh, affect your guide fishermen, and a number of other, uh, opportunities that people are using now because the bay's closed the oyster.
Yeah.
And as Commissioner Lockley said, sustainability, if we get it back where we want, but we're not putting nothing back to help replenish these bars as the oysters are being taken out of the bay, we're going to end up right back where we're at now.
Yep.
And, and that's a valid, uh, I talked about that also at the last meeting, but, uh, I think we're all understanding the, uh, the detriment of, of how we do this Apalachicola Bay Management Plan. It's not going to be what the oystermen are traditionally used to. But we have to look at ways of having a sustainable harvest, whether it's limited entry, whether it's limited number of bags being taken out of the bay. All these things are going to be part of trying to create again, once again, a sustainable harvest.
And it's going to be hard, like you said, you know, the oysters have traditionally just been, uh, the economic foundation of this place, and it's, it's hard and it's terrible because, like you said, the oysters going away is going to affect everything, the entire ecosystem, so. Yeah, we need the little things back.
Uh, Dr. Brooks, one more point. Um, would you be able to distill this information into some sort of a langui, a layman's language in such a way that it's publishable in our local papers?
Yes, so we did release an op-ed, um, and we're planning on another one, so we're certainly happy to do that.
Okay.
I, I would say just for, for me alone, I, I would have an issue with limited entry, I'm one of five, that, if it matters. Uh, because in my mind, if, when you go with limited entry, you're one generation away from no commercial seafood for that industry. Uh, because if it's truly limited entry, there has to be somebody there to take your license and there has to be a certain, I don't know how the qualifications would go. I think if you limit the number of bags, well, number one, if you have somebody there enforcing that five percent rule.
Right.
We, we're, a lot of these discussions go away. Because I can tell you, when they did have check stations in the bay, yeah, it was aggravating for people, but it worked.
Yeah.
I know it costs money, but it worked.
Yep.
So, you know, for me personally, I'm not in favor of limited entry, so I just.
Yeah, and, and you're not alone. You know, we, there's been a lot of pushback against that, and there's different ways of doing it, and, and yeah, that may, may be that it's so unpopular and intractable that it doesn't end up being adopted.
Well, the other stuff's going to limit it, if you have limited bags or you have increased enforceability.
And it's not going to be everything, yeah.
It's not worth the time, you know what I mean? So it's going to limit itself.
And you know what, Dr. Brooks? As you're beginning to show us all these different parameters, there seems to be a potential here of best bay practices coming up. When we, if we do open that bay at some point, it seems to me that there should be a, perhaps a new, modern education for the new fishermen about what are best bay practices. Uh, Chairman Ricky, you taught me several years ago that one of the issues about our bay is, you got to turn up the bottom, remember how we talked about that? And, and you briefly mentioned that today. You're finding certain things that make a bay healthy, and it seems to me that the old techniques of tonging and everything, although basically very, very effective, need to be coupled with new best bay practices. Do you see that as a potential that you could do in education?
Yeah, I hadn't thought of that, that's an interesting idea.
Okay.
Maybe we can, if we have our sit-down, you know, we can talk about different ways of, you know, outreach to the community and doing things like that.
New, new entry fishermen perhaps could be, um, trained and, and get certified in some new best bay practices.
All right, hold that thought, we'll discuss it, yeah.
Doctor, doctor.
Yeah.
I was an oysterman, I started in the seventies. I'd have been through every process you talk. When I started, we didn't fish in the summer, we didn't fish oysters in the summer. They closed the bay, they set the alarm or something, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That, that went on, the bay got better, they started opening it year-round. During the storms, had checkpoints. Hold, I think it was five bags, took all day to kitchen. It wasn't like, see, when the bay get healthy, when the bay got healthy, the problem, a lot of these problems, oystermen called themselves. Bag limit fifteen, they getting thirty. Or more. That's because if there wasn't no, by the, the regulation and enforcement, if you, you, you got to enforce it. If you don't have no enforcement out there, people going to catch, they going to do what they.
They can get away with.
What they can get away with.
Yeah, no, that's human nature, it's true, enforcement's important.
I did it too.
All right, strike that.
But, everything, each one of them worked. Five bags, go through the checkpoint, it just was thirty minutes hold.
Mm-hmm.
Hour, corner of the highway, catch the crowd, yeah. Sometimes, you wait and you visualize, or either you go in early, you ain't got to wait that long. But at the end of the, end of the program, the bay came back. Come back, and they had some banana years.
Mm-hmm.
Ten or twelve of them. That's when FWC moved up. People were fishing day and night. I mean, you know. You got to have, you got to be, you got to have everything in place. And I can, we can't put it all on the universities.
No.
Nobody else.
Yeah.
I mean, y'all doing what you supposed to do. You put, if the oysters out there, you done what you supposed to do. But, the oystermen got to do what they supposed to do, because they want to keep them out there. If not, couple more years, be back to the same thing. Be back to ground zero.
And that's the danger of opening too early. I know people want it, and they see oysters out there, and they think that, you know, we're leaving money lying around in the bay, you know, that we could be harvesting, and that's, that's true, but, as Commissioner Parrish says, if you, if you don't have any oysters out there, you're not going to get any spat. So, we need to leave them alone to do their job, and then maybe next year, all of those numbers will be three hundred bags, you know? It's, we do have to leave them alone.
The two productive oysters bar within the bay was Cat Point to the east, I bought down the mile.
Yeah, that side's...
At later, at later date, some of them bars I went out to, couldn't even find. I mean, I, I had the numbers wrote down, I'm looking at my GPS, is you wrong? No, it was just like that floater. I mean, it, it had deteriorated, wasn't nothing on it.
There's nothing there, yeah, I know.
Wasn't nothing on it. But, before, you made, I don't see, thirty, forty boats, especially on them Three Sisters going down, down the mile. I mean, you, you see thirty, forty boats on each one of them.
And they're little. Those mounds are little.
But anyway, just keep us posted. I don't think I know.
Anyone else, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Dr. Brooks, for being here today.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening. I do appreciate the opportunity to talk to the Commission.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And, Commissioners, just so you know, Dr. Brooks was scheduled to be here a couple of meetings ago, and we moved her to today because of her agendas. So, she was already scheduled to be here today. Ms. Rich, you're up next.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, the first item on my report. Franklin County has received the second invoice from the City of Carabel for fire control services rendered through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The invoice totaled one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, and follows the rates established by the agreement dated May ninth, twenty twenty-two between the City of Carabel and Franklin County, which is one hundred and sixty dollars per response for personnel and ninety dollars per truck on scene. The attached invoice will be paid from the Landarch St. James Fire District's MSBU proceeds. Board action to approve and authorize the payment of the second invoice to the City of Carabel for response efforts. As per instruction, all payments on behalf of the district will be presented to the board for approval during this transitional period.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's five a.
All right, Commissioners, uh, next item. On Thursday, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, Playground Advisory Committee members met and discussed the merits of various equipment suppliers for the playground replacement at Lighthouse Park on St. George Island. Rep Services with Landscape Structures Incorporated was selected due to the availability of upgraded corrosion-resistant coastal finishes and the wide variety of inclusive equipment. As the vendors who were discussed all had different forms of contract pricing available, the bid reference for this vendor was the Clay County Playground Contract. This renewed contract is attached to this report as supporting documentation. Piggyback contract pricing is allowed by the county's procurement policy, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection has confirmed that piggyback contract pricing is an acceptable form of pricing for the program. Vendor Game Time was ranked second, and if budget negotiations and design concepts fall through with vendor LSI, Game Time will be contacted. Board action to authorize moving forward with vendor Rep Services with Landscape Structures Incorporated to proceed with design, price quotations, and concept.
Oh, move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by two, Commissioner Parrish and Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? I would like to say, just by discussion, so the board knows, this is the item that Mr. Solomon referenced earlier. We applied for a grant, we received it, uh, we asked the TDC for some funds for this beach park facility, and they approved it, sent it forward. And we also have received some private donations from residents in the St. George Island community toward this project. I just want to make sure, recognize that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, next item, number three, included in the budget this year was fifty thousand dollars for ballistic shields for the Sheriff's Department to be paid directly by the Board of County Commissioners. Survival Armor has contract pricing with the state of Florida and was the vendor chosen by the Franklin County Sheriff's Department. The shields are warranted for a period of five years after purchase, and the attached fifty thousand dollar quote is for ten twenty-inch by thirty-four-inch shields, two twenty-four-inch by forty-eight-inch shield bunkers, and two trolleys for the shield bunkers. Board action to approve the purchase and issuance of a purchase order per the attached quote to Survival Armor for the ballistic shields.
Oh, move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion?
Yeah, what, uh, what they voted with then?
Do you know what all of them would stand? I know it's ballistic.
Oh, oh.
So, it stands bullets. That was his question.
Let's have a demonstration.
I understand, it's actually pistols and rifles.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. There's probably, uh, more terminology than that.
It'd be good if the sheriff brought those in and showed us.
That, that would be a great demonstration. Uh, not, not really a demonstration, but just to show the product.
Bring in the material and let us see what it looks like.
Yes.
Any other questions?
The reason I ask, some of them voted with than AR fifteen.
Probably would.
From what I understand, this is the upgraded model.
Wow, really?
Poor Ian.
Your expression, "No, the million dollars."
Oh, Lord. So, did we, we had a motion and second on this, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, uh, let's see, we have already covered item four previously. Uh, next item is item number five, less the Third Street Dune Walkover Advertisement, because we also covered that item previously. Board action to request to advertise for construction bids. Quite a few projects have reached a point in the design process, whereas the bid specifications are ready to go. The following projects are now ready for advertisement. These projects will all have opening dates sometime in December. Alligator Drive Multi-Use Path, Phases Three and Four, which is the pass section from the Marina to Tom Roberts Road. CR sixty-seven, Phase Two, which is the resurfacing and widening from Crooked River Bridge North for two miles to State Forest Road one sixty-six. And the Second Street and US ninety-eight intersection repair in East Point, which includes resurfacing, patching, and regrading. Board action to approve advertisement bids for the projects listed above.
What about the Dune Walker?
Oh, we referenced that previously. Yep.
I, I do have a question before we make a motion on this. The stuff with Second Street, doesn't it, didn't it have a component with stormwater? That's what we've been waiting on the whole time. This just says resurfacing, patching, and regrading.
It does, there's actually an inlet in there.
Okay.
Yep.
Did you miss the Third Street Dune?
We did that earlier.
Yeah, we did that earlier.
Okay.
Yep.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Motion to approve these advertisements by Commissioner Bolt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, next item is item number six. Oh, okay, okay, I can talk about. Okay, um, attached are five resolutions for the adoption of unanticipated revenues as part of the end of the fiscal year bookkeeping. These funds were not included in your original adopted twenty-one, twenty-two budget, because at the time of budget adoption, they were unanticipated. Florida Statute one twenty-nine allows a county sixty days after the end of a fiscal year to incorporate unanticipated revenues into the prior year's budget. As grant invoices are processed for work completed through September thirtieth, resolutions and amendments will be part of my report through the end of this month. The first resolution is for thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars in federal grant funds received from the U.S. Treasury relative to the Restore SGI Stormwater Improvements Project. The second resolution is for eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars in federal grant funds received from the U.S. Treasury relative to the Restore Countywide Dune Restoration Project. The third resolution is for one hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars in state grant funds received from the State Fire Marshal's Office for the installation of a sprinkler system at the Armory. The fourth resolution is for seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars in federal grant funds received from the U.S. Department of Agriculture for the East Point feasibility study. And the fifth, the fifth resolution is for two million, five hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars in state grant funds received from the Florida Department of Transportation for the County Road C thirty A paving project. Board action to adopt the five attached budget resolutions.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, Commissioners, and I just have a few, um, items to note for board information, just some miscellaneous project updates. Um, for the Restore Program, we will be starting our forty-five-day public comment period, um, which should be beginning in the next, uh, about the next two weeks. Um, and that's actually a requirement before we can actually submit the construction grant applications for the three projects that were discussed at your last meeting. Um, we also have, um, as far as the new EOC, um, construction on that, we are awaiting a construction cost estimate from the engineers to bring back to you all for consideration of sending a funding request onto the consortium for construction of that building. Um, our next item is we are also, um, awaiting a construction cost estimate from the architect for the Carabel Beach Park Restoration Project. Um, that's what's currently holding up our grant agreement with Division of Historic Preservation on that one. Um, and I understand they're going to be actually onsite, um, the end of this week, so we should actually have an estimate by next week, and hopefully by the next commission meeting, we can have, uh, a grant agreement on that one. Um, and then also, we are, uh, awaiting cost estimates for Brumman Park as well for the drainage, um, and ADA access ramp. That's it.
What about the lighting?
Oh, the lighting is, um, since everything is happening there at the same time, it's kind of being held up by that.
Okay, okay. Do you want to hear any questions from Ms. Rich? Thank you, Ms. Parrish. Sir, you're up next.
All right, Commissioners, go, we could go straight to page seventeen. We did the first four items in my report. Item five, in the current contract between the Corps and the dredge contractor, Mike Hooks Enterprises, has come to the attention of the county that the project's scope has fallen short of dredging the entire East Point Channel. It is important for the entirety of the channel to be dredged to ensure that sufficient current runs through the dredge area to keep the channel deep enough for navigation. The existing scope fell short of approximately a hundred and twenty linear feet on the western end, and five hundred and twenty linear feet on the eastern end. So, board action for staff to reach out to the dredge contractor, Mr. Hooks, directly to see what actions would need to be taken to dredge entirety of the channel, including requesting an estimate for what additional dredge work would cost. The county obtaining additional estimates and remove any sediment that has accreted, uh, the sandbars, of course, blocking the, the channel in those areas. All necessary actions and estimates will require a quick turnaround due to the sensitive timeline, such as the dredge project has started and the dredge contractor is already mobilized. Once cost estimates are available, the board can decide how to proceed. So, we're asking you guys to allow us to kind of work, get the information we need to get this project to dredge the entire channel, basically. Um, there are a couple of things, uh, I know we need to work out. We might need Attorney Schuler to talk about some agreements, because we want some of that dry sediment on the one end to be removed, that's private property, so we got to kind of work all that out legally. We might have to declare at some point, maybe it's an emergency-type situation, to make sure we meet the timeline while the dredge contractor is there working. We do not want him to leave and have to re-mobilize and cost us a whole bunch of money. So, this is me just making sure I get the nod from the board that we can move ahead with what we're planning to do.
Absolutely.
I've got a question on that.
Yes, sir.
I ain't got no problem about it being dredged. I, when the channel was drenched before, what the code done? How many feet?
Before my time, uh, here.
Honestly, I don't, I don't, I don't know the numbers to tell you off the top. I was doing some research online to try to find the figures and the numbers.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know.
Did they got, uh, is it business that's in?
Yes.
What are you talking about now?
Yes.
Okay.
The other time, that's the, the end that has the five hundred and twenty additional feet. You're talking about stopping short of the last business there. Actually, the last couple of businesses, commercial properties.
Oh, man, yeah, okay.
And I will say that, I don't know if it's appropriate now, knowing this and talking about this behind the scenes, trying to take care of not just East Point, but the dredging project period. Because if anything comes of ramp latch, I'm expecting to stay the same way.
Yes, sir.
We need to get it done while they're here.
Yes.
Uh, I do know, and have checked with Attorney Schuler, so just so the board knows, I'm pretty sure this is, the, because the next question will be how we're going to pay for it. So, TDC funds are allowable to use for maintenance of channels.
Infrastructure.
And, and, and different stuff with that. It also has economic development components, and there's several other ways we might comply if that doesn't work. And, the only thing I've read is, is a cap on how much can be used from TDC funds for the channel, but we're at a seven million dollar project, we're, we're not touching that cap.
Okay, good.
So, I just want to make sure the board's aware of that.
Well, if they got business there, I'm fine with it. People need to get there.
Yes, everybody needs deep water.
But you know what, Mr. Chairman? I wonder, how did we fall short and miss this hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty linear feet and one hundred and twenty? What, what happened? Why didn't we see that survey?
I was going to say, we didn't, but go ahead.
I, I don't mean we, but Corps engineer.
The permit was already in existence, even before I come on the board, I'd been after this for six years.
Wow.
Uh, with the rest of the board, I'm, I'm not alone. We all pursued this together. But the permit was already permitted the way it currently is, but it's not covering the entirety of the channel. All the discussions I had with the Corps about the way the permit is, there's an island on one end, not on both ends, there, it wasn't the entirety of the channel. Commissioner, we can start over if you want to, and I'm like, no, we're not starting over.
Nope.
It's taking forever to get to where we are, we're definitely not restarting the process.
That's right.
So, that's, that, to answer your question, that's it.
So, the Corps has no empathy in this at all?
Uh, well, they already had a permit. Let's just put it that way. They were going by the permit they'd already issued.
Okay.
That's something.
So did.
I make a motion to approve this.
Yes.
We have motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any more discussion?
Yeah, the water belong, the water still belongs to the state, right? It can't be no private property.
Uh, if it's attached to your property, then it still belongs to you.
Well, he talking about the water, though. What he saying is the.
Uh, he said it can't be no private property. You were talking about private property concerns.
Yeah, oh, I thought he was saying if the work is being done in the water, that's the state's responsibility, that the state owns the water, so.
Well, maybe I misunderstood him.
Is that what you're saying, Commissioner Lockley?
Yeah, I mean, we ain't gonna have no issue with private property, with water being there. That's what I'm trying to find out.
Good point.
Maybe not. Maybe that is the answer.
Well, I'm sorry.
I did wanna. That's what I'm telling you.
But what I was talking about, if we, even if it's commercially owned property, if we have to work on it, we have to get some kind of agreement to, to make sure the contractor is protected, cause the contractor's working for the county in this instance.
If they have to stage there or be there is what I just.
You see, so they have to come in close, Commissioner, I just wanna make sure we're, we're good with everybody. That's, that's all. That's what I meant. I'm sorry if I, if I said something that confused the situation.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Our commissioners, item six, uh, this is on St. George Island, well, everybody, Pine Street. Uh, several vacant parcels have been built out in the last few years. There have been increasing, increased traffic on unpaved roads on St. George Island, on Pine, Street West. There are stop signs at the following intersections, the Second Street and Pine, Fifth Street and Pine, Seventh Street and Pine, Twelfth Street and Pine. As unpaved roads require a lot of maintenance and upkeep, just as Howard, in an effort to preserve the condition of the road for, for a longer duration after each grading, we are suggesting the addition of two additional stop signs along Pine and Eighth and Pine and Ninth Street. The increase in stop signs will help to reduce wear from, through traffic along the unpaved roads. I'd like to also request that the road department ensure that the two intersections are plainly marked and have line of sight that is clear from vegetation. So, with the stop signs, it, they will stop them from tearing up and down the street and then causing us more maintenance issues, basically what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, cause what it's gonna do is it's gonna make them, they're not gonna get up to the speeds they've been getting up to cause they're gonna have to turn.
And hell, Dawson, they're tearing up the road, and if it rains, it makes it worse.
I, I know it's on the agenda this way, but if it's the pleasure of the board to approve this, I would like to also include Tenth Street, same area.
Okay.
Because going and looking at the state of the road now, I would like to include Eighth, Ninth, and Tenth. If, if the board says choose to do that.
Oh, that's right, Tenth isn't there. Okay, Commissioner, you're right. A little while I thought, okay. Tenth had already, already had a sign. So, uh, if you would, uh, the motion would be to include Tenth Street. Commissioners.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt. Second by Commissioner Lockland. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Item seven, the East Point Christmas Parade will take place on December eighth, I'm sorry, December ninth, it's right there, Michael, at four-thirty P.M. Participants will begin lining up at four P.M. And the route will start behind Webb Seafood at the corner of Power Drive and C.A. Gillespie Street, turn left, which is east, onto Highway ninety-eight, and end at Fisherman's Choice. The Sheriff's Traffic Division will be notified of the parade route and time. I need to go get a permit from FDOT for this, so that's why I'm bringing it up today.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion?
Yeah, hit that time already?
It is that time.
It is.
Thanksgiving is how many weeks away?
Not many.
Okay.
Three.
Come and play, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Item eight, Commissioners, on Thursday, December twenty-seventh, Mr. Carrington attended the monthly Armory Project Update Meeting. I attached the report. Mr. Carrington reported that work on the sprinkler system is progressing and the contract is on schedule to have substantial completion of the project by the middle of January. Based on this update, will the board allow county staff to start accepting reservations for February fifteenth and on? Or do you wanna wait until next month's, um, report?
Mr. Chairman, I, I was gonna say, I mean, I'd hate to book things and have people on the books for the armory and then it not be ready, cause that's kinda egg on our face.
Okay.
Give a little more margin.
Yeah.
Let's get a little bit closer to it.
Okay, closer before we start, okay.
But I would ask a question, though.
Uh-huh.
Last time we ended up doing this, I thought that the, the completion date would be at the beginning of January. Now, we're looking at the middle of January?
Was.
Cause last time they, they, last time, if I remember right, what was on the report was they were actually a little bit ahead of schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the beginning of January, but this is the middle of January.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I got impression from Mark that they're not as far ahead as they were. Could be some supply issue, so we're back to the, the original, uh, timeline.
Trying to clarify.
Okay.
Probably shouldn't be so.
Eager?
Eager. Cause if we have supply, supply chain issues and it's not ready, then, you know, you got people upset with us cause we can't let them use the armory.
Yes, ma'am.
I brought a motion to table this issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to table by Commissioner Parrish. Second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
So if I notice, I'm gonna put table until November, Mark goes to the November update meeting. Bring it back up, see how you feel, okay? All right, Commissioners, uh, mostly informational items next, but I will discuss number nine. At your last meeting during the public comments, there was an issue raised regarding the county attorney's ownership interest in the title company that was used for the closing and title work of the Alligator Point Fire Department property. I contacted Attorney Leonard Carson, the county's outside counsel, and asked for opinion in this matter. In Attorney Carson's opinion, he referred to Florida Bar Ethics Opinion seventy-three, one, and Florida Statutes, Chapter one-twelve, and said that once the county is aware of the Attorney Schuler's ownership interest in the title insurance company, and the title company insurance does not refer business to the county attorney, there's no ethics issue. This opinion covers the recent purchase of the Alligator Point Fire Department property and past county property transaction. And let me, let me clarify something. I probably should have done this in, in writing this. When it says not refer business to the county, they're not talking about occasional or incidental business. They're talking about if, and I, and I talked to Leonard about this. If, as long as the title company is not there for the purpose of sending the, all business to the attorney, that's, that's what he means by not, we're not talking about if they walk in the door one or two, you know, on some sort of, uh, infrequent basis. And in addition, Leonard said this is done throughout the state. This is not, he didn't say the state, he said this is a common practice of county attorneys. That's, that's what they do, that's part of their service. So, I, I, I just wanted to bring it up and clarify this, so there's no more issues or discussions, you know, I'm sorry. I can't stop the discussion. But some of I think there's something in some way going on that's wrong and the county's not aware of. We are. I explained, just for public record, I explained to Leonard, I'm sorry, Attorney Carson, that the attorney's office shares the same building with it. He said, Michael, that is not a problem. He said this, this, this happens all the time with county attorneys and title work doing for, for the county. So, I, I, unless there's any other questions you guys have, to me, it's a done deal, we move on.
I, I'm satisfied with the report, I've been satisfied with the discussions we've had the whole time. Cause here's the thing. Half or, if, if you take that same line of thinking, then we have a problem with, potentially, with our TDC vendors, we have a problem with ARPC, we have a problem with anybody else we do business with.
Tracy Bosney.
When we say, hey, you're already doing business with us, can you do this for us too?
Yes.
You know, so. I, I'm good.
I, I, you know, I hate to say it like this, but there's nothing, nothing to see, we could, you know, nothing there, but.
This is open and transparent and ethical, just having this conversation on loan.
Yeah.
And it's access for the people, it's just good common sense. And there's, there's built-in ethical filters all through this issue.
Yes.
In addition to all that, any, any action this board takes is put on agenda, it's publicly discussed, has a motion, a second, and it takes a vote. There's nothing that's not transparent about this entirety.
And, Mr. Chairman, the documents are there in the record.
Yes.
For you to see, I'm like, you know, it's like this morning, a doctor rehash, but the whole TDC thing about how the process was done, I'm, I'm like, if, I'm like, come on. This, the data's there, the information about how each vendor was judged, that was in the RFQ, it's a specialized section just for that, it's, it's there. But, it is, anyway, I'll just let that be. All right. Anything else of that, can I move on?
Yep.
All right, good news. So I heard from Robert Amick, the, uh, fire coordinator for this, uh, St. James' Land Village. We scheduled a training session on Tuesday, November eighth at five-thirty. That's Election Day, it's gonna be at the fire department over there. This is the point I wanna get across. This training is for people interested in being firefighters, not for people that wanna serve on the board, not for people that wanna help with support. This particular training is for the firefighters. Because what I don't want it to turn into is something where they're arguing about what's more important, the firefighters or creating the board. Could we please put that to rest? And let's start moving forward and get some training done for the firefighters. So, I'm saying this publicly, hopefully it's received in love and everybody understands that and know what our intentions are, we need to get this fire department moving.
And I'll be there to represent.
Maybe you need to advertise it.
Uh, yeah, I already put it on the website, if you want me to, you're right, Commissioner, you know what? I'm gonna send this to the radio and to, to Michael Allen and to David Adelstein, I will.
Yeah, that'll be real important.
I will.
Cause insurance companies are beginning to sense this problem.
Okay, I will. Make sure I advertise, and I'll be specific about for firefighters. I'm, I'm not against anybody, I'm just trying to drive a message, you know, on. Um, I did ten.
Maybe a continuing sentence that thereafter firefighters, there'll be administrative training.
Yes, like what I have in here, yes, I will, yes, sir. Um, the bill, I just wanna, I need to let you guys know, the billing department has an upcoming vacant permit technician position due to resignation. Mr. Patterson is interviewing from the current pool, since they're not that old, to be very honest with you. And if by chance, no one from the pool is hired or considered a candidate, then I'll come back, or he'll come back to the board for permission to advertise. And an advertisement for the billing inspector should be in the paper within the next few weeks. He's trying to fine tune that work with the state, make sure he gets the correct wording as to the requirements for billing inspector. Um, and, okay, this might be a discussion here. So, the city of Flatchakola and Leslie Street. So, you remember I brought a plan to you about using the money they turned back in from CRA? Well, they went out and they got a SCOP grant, and they got the award for it. Here's the problem, Commissioners, they cannot start the project until July of twenty-twenty-three.
Do they know for sure they've got that grant?
Yes, I have the actual award, they forwarded me the award.
Would, no action today, would it be something that the county could do and that we could get the award from the grant?
I don't think how's how FDOT works, Mark is the genius in that.
Cause that's a long time.
I know, that's what I was, here holding my breath, thinking, oh my God, they're gonna get me on this one. But, um, I, I, I don't think so. What I asked them to check and the city hasn't gotten back to me, can we, cause I got you guys to, uh, agree to pay for the design and engineering, could, even if we pay for that, would they use the design and engineering? So then we wouldn't have to wait for that, so they could go straight to construction on, in July of twenty-twenty-three? That I haven't received an answer on, and so that I kinda, I mean, I, Commissioner, I'll ask. I mean, that's a question, Mark could tell me top of his head whether that'll work or not.
Mr. Chairman, but, but you're saying that the, uh, six hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars is for design and construction?
Yes.
So that's what FDOT is allowing, or that's what they think that it will cost?
Yes. So, yes.
So if we go ahead and do the design, get the design done, can they reimburse us our money out of this two?
That's what he's asking to, I can, I'll find out, sir.
So if you're ahead of the ballgame, because, and I don't really understand why they'll, unless they're awarding this as FDOT usually does, they're telling you, you'll get the money next year.
Yes.
Which is July, which is when the state budget starts.
Exactly, sir.
So they don't have the money this year.
Yeah. So.
That's why it's not being appropriate.
What I'm hearing, you want me to ask not just would they use our design and engineering, would they also reimburse us for the design and engineering?
If they're providing the funds, I mean.
Okay, I'll ask.
And, and maybe, you know, maybe we ask for an emergency declaration so that this project is moved up and somebody else is put back.
Okay.
You, you understand what I'm saying?
Okay.
I mean, this ain't like, this ain't like paving a road, it needs to be paved, you own a five-year work plan. No, this road needs to be fixed.
Okay.
It's been damaged for four years since Hurricane Michael. So, but how much do we have say-so in this because it was something applied for by the city?
Exactly, yes.
I understand all that, but just a thought process.
I'll try.
Yeah.
I'll try. I will try, best I can offer you, yes.
That's all we can do, but.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see they got something applied for and awarded to fix the road. I'm proud of that.
Yes, you're right. Anything, anything else, sir, that?
I don't have anything else for you.
Okay, so I keep forgetting to bring it up, but I, I will send it to you, Michael, I want you to send it to the rest of the commissioners.
Uh-huh.
While we're talking about your stuff. The fact, we're doing our legislative, uh, meeting that's gonna set the legislative policy for the next session.
Yes.
But we actually have two different things that they have on their policies.
Yes.
That are sponsored by Franklin County Legislation.
Okay.
One of them is the, the redoing of the, uh, the reinstating of the, the Water Management District.
Mm-hmm.
At East Point, which also includes Hamilton and some other counties, cause FAC's doing it.
Okay.
And the other one is, and it was sponsored by us, the bill was sponsored by us. Uh, the other one is to do with the, uh, what was it? Oh, making sure we stay on top of keeping our local prisons in our rural counties.
Yes.
Okay.
That's still a legislative policy that FAC is doing. You know, we, we tried to make sure we involved in the process, not just attending the meetings. So, I wanted to make sure the commissioners have copies of that to know.
Okay.
Because it's not just us speaking for ourself, it's not just any one entity. We have the Small County Coalition, which we're all a part of, Association of Counties, they are taking this task and plan to take it to the legislature on our behalf.
Okay. And I do have one more thing, Commissioner Bolt?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You, you, sir.
My pleasure.
It was a pleasure, sir.
Thank you, mine too, thank you. Um, I had one more question.
Yes.
Thank you. Last year this time, we had, um, uh, welcomed, uh, the Franklin County Schools to make some money by offering this parking lot for parking for people to go to the Seafood Festival. Has that been approved and gonna happen?
Last meeting, I think I did last, didn't I?
The clerk does that.
You did.
Okay.
I did last meeting, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it was last meeting.
I did do it last meeting, yes, Commissioner, I sure did.
Oh, I, I know, I was not here.
Yes.
Yes, I was gone.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, very good.
I sure did.
Thank you.
All right.
So they'll be here from, like, oneish, you know, on Friday, Commissioner.
They do it every year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, sir?
I'm, I'm done, that's it.
You're good. Attorney Schuler, you're up next, sir.
All right, sir. Good morning, Commissioners, I have one action item, uh, for consideration. It's a memorandum of understanding regarding the existing Alligator Point Volunteer Fire Department property. I understand that from Mr. Pierce, or actually from Mr. Paul Parker, uh, from his conversations with Mr. Pierce, there was a request by the Volunteer Fire Department to continue to occupy the building once the county purchases it. Uh, this memorandum of understanding would address that by allowing them to stay there until either they get their certificate of occupancy issued from the new fire department or December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-three, whichever is sooner. It can be extended if necessary, depending on the circumstances. Uh, they will carry the, uh, property liability insurance on the, on the, on the building and the property. They will name the county as an additional insured. I understand that the county's liability po- po- policy will pick up this property automatically once the county takes title. There's no provision for the payment of rent. However, if there are any claims made, then the way the agreement is written, the, uh, fire department's policy would be the primary claims-made policy, policy would be the primary claims-made policy, and our policy would only be claimed once their policy limits had been reached. Um, they will be responsible for all of the repairs and maintenance and any improvements that have to be made to the property during the term of the agreement. Um, if the building is damaged for some reason beyond the ability to use, then the parties will get together and discuss, can it be fixed? Should it be fixed, or should we terminate the agreement? Um, and then I also put in a provision that says that the fire department understands that the principal overriding purpose of the county buying the property is to realign the road, and essentially, this memorandum is secondary to that primary public purpose of reconstructing and realigning that part of Alligator Drive. And if y'all have no questions for me, then we are, I would request a board motion authorizing the Chairman to sign this memorandum of understanding.
So, move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Pierce. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Another thought. With regard to public requests for, um, public information and doing the, we have many requests for public information, and our staff is asked to research it and produce records and so on. Um, in the spirit of making sure that, that we have everybody's rights fully recognized and honored, I'm seeing that the staff has a repetitive burden sometimes in looking for records and coming up with expenses and time and materials. Should we be discussing potentially charging folks who are requesting a certain higher limit of records, that we have a fair and reasonable fee for time and materials for researching and gathering their production? Thoughts?
Commissioner Bolt, there, there's a state statute under Chapter one nineteen that addresses that. It sets out some statutory fees that we're allowed to charge for copies. And essentially, if the, the public record request is such that it takes, and I don't remember the exact language in the statute, but essentially, if it is an inordinate burden of a very excessive public record request, then we do have the right as a county to declare that that request falls under that particular statutory section for, you know, use of staff time, technology, and they can be charged. And on occasion, I have advised the county to invoke that provision, but ordinarily, it's not invoked. I mean, for example, we had someone that made a public record request that went back thirty years, a couple of years ago, and, and they received a estimate that said, you know, estimated staff time was whatever it was, and they had to pay that deposit. And if the deposit was insufficient, then they had to pay the balance before they got their documents. Um, and if the estimate is excessive, then they get a refund of the balance due. But, but that provision requiring, you know, the, the use of excessive technology and staff, again, we, we don't invoke that very often.
He has that answer because I ask him the same questions, Commissioner. Yeah, because sometimes it does. And, and he grounds me. He said, okay, all right, Maroni, just, just get the stuff, let me know how long it took, and then, then he'll decide if it needs to be. But, yeah, some people do take advantage, in my opinion, you know, so. But, it is what it is. That's what we do. We're here to serve.
I, I have a question for your Attorney Schuler. Well, it might not be you. It might be more Ms. Griffin or county staff. It's just an issue. So, we had a county employee that was terminated without cause. The, uh, I think they actually settled the issue, but in between, they become a county employee again, but in between, they are, they don't know if they're getting the credit for years of service they would have gotten had they still been employed, even though they're wrongfully terminated. So, I need to ask, and it might, I don't know if it's a your question or Aaron's question, I would like to ask that research be done. I'll get with y'all about the, I'm not trying to put everybody's names out there.
Sure.
But I'll get with y'all about it to make sure if they have proper credit for that, what way we might go to rectify that, if it's possible. That's where you come in. That's why I wanted to now to mention it.
Yes.
Uh, you know what I mean? So, but I'll, I'll get with you guys afterwards about it, but I didn't want to at least bring it up today.
Yeah, okay. Just because I would mark too. Not that mark. I never agreed, sorry.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But anyway, thank you. Anyone else have anything for Attorney Schuler? Commissioner comments?
I'd like to say something, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just wanted to, um, thank the folks of Franklin County for the honor to serve them. I've really appreciated it, and particularly the folks of my district. These have been four of the best years of my life, and, and certainly a hallmark that I can really remember. And I'd like to also recognize the county staff, particularly the Board of County Commissioners staff. They really, really have facilitated all of us here on the board, and I have felt[1760.32]